Going to call this meeting of the Albemarle County Planning Commission to order for May 24th, 2022. Can we have the roll call, please?
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Bivins.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
And Mr. Carizana is absent. All right, quorum has been established and we'll move forward with the meeting. The first item is other matters on the agenda from the public that are not, excuse me, I'm saying this all backwards. Let me start again. The first item is for anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda for this evening. So anyone from the public who would wish to speak on an item not on the agenda. Okay, seeing no one come forward, is there anyone online for that now? Okay, all right, moving on. We have a Planning Commission Rules of Procedure Amendment. This has to do with allowances for attending in absentia. I believe it's a couple of times a year, and this was sent to us ahead of time, but I think our counselor is also going to put it up on the screen. Yes, there it is.
I already have it, should be on your screens as well.
Yes.
Very good. So Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Andy Herrick, I'm the Deputy County Attorney. As we discussed at the last meeting, our office has been asked to prepare proposed rule, proposed amendments to the rules of procedure. What we've discovered post-COVID, now that the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission are returning to in-person meetings, is that at least the Planning Commission lacked rules for remote participation. The Board of Supervisors has them already, Planning Commission does not. So we learned quickly that this is something that the Planning Mission could probably use. And so what we did was we've draft, our office drafted a, a rule, made it Rule 7 of the Rules of Procedure, that basically mirrors what the Board of Supervisors already has in effect. You'll note that under state law, it's not unlimited remote participation, that there has to be a certain reason given for it, and then there's only a certain number of times it can be invoked. Part of our hesitancy in bringing this forward, not bringing this forward sooner, is that state law is about to change again on September 1st, and we are working with the Board of Supervisors to adopt or amend their rules as well. And, and once that happens, we'll bring probably additional rule amendments back to you to be effective September 1st. I'm happy to go over the, the rules, I, I put them up on the big screen, they were available in your, in your packets as well. And rather than go through them, I'm just happy to answer any questions that you might have about the rules or about the, the process for amending them.
I had one question for, it says, "One of the reasons that you can be absent and participate remotely is for a private reason?"
A personal reason.
A personal reason. What would that be? It's just.
A, a family emergency, and it has to be, it has to be cited as such, it's not entirely clear how much specificity needs to be provided. Commissioners are limited to only invoking that twice a year or 25% of the meetings. So that's not an unlimited free pass.
Sure.
One, one other thing I would note is that all virtual meetings are, are not allowed, except in, in the case of an emergency like COVID. But otherwise, all virtual meetings are not allowed and won't be allowed still under the, under the new state law either.
Okay.
At least not for Planning Commissions or Boards of Supervisors.
Sure. Anyone else have any questions about that, about item 7?
I just have one question, I think I'm reading this right under Section A 3, I think. It talks about quorum physically assembled. The quorum of the commission must be physically assembled at the primary net or central meeting location. Does that mean that the commissioner who is remote cannot, does not vote?
No, the, the remote commissioner can still vote, but the, by quorum needs to be, so there needs to be at, at least four commissioners present at the central location before anybody can participate remotely.
Got it, thank you.
All right, well, unless there's other questions, is there a motion to
some of them?
Adopt this rule change, so moved. A second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second any discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll call, please? Yes, Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for preparing that. So the Albemarle County Planning Commission Rules of Procedure is now amended as per the document. And now we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, which is on the other sheet, it's a couple of different minutes. Do we have a motion to either approve it, or does anyone want to pull the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded, any discussion? Right, may I have the roll call, please? All right, Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivins.
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne.
Aye.
Okay, we've adopted the consent agenda, the next item for this evening is SB 202100017, Foster Forge Farm School. And Scott Clark is here to give us the staff report.
Good evening, evening, just open this presentation real quick. It will get underway. Alrighty, so this is a special use permit for a private school. You can see on the map, there is located in the rural areas on Barracks Road, proposal for schools up to 60 students focusing on outdoor and nature-based education. I'll show you the plan in a moment, but as you will see, there are says for, there are actually five, 14 by 18 classroom buildings, a, an assembly and administrative building, and a bathroom and storage building, plus some miscellaneous structures. There's an open space parking area, a grass overflow parking area, and an activity area with a pavilion. There have also been a couple of special exception requests submitted recently on this matter that have not been reviewed yet, and would need to be reviewed before a site plan or during the site plan review for the use if it is approved. The first is for disturbance of critical slopes for a walking trail, it's a fairly small area, which I'll show you in a moment. The second is to remove the requirement for curb and gutter in the driveways and parking area. Again, it's something fairly typical for the rural areas, so these are not matters we have major concerns with, and they could be dealt with more appropriately with the site plan. So here's an aerial view, just to give you the context. The parcel in blue is the site for this proposed use. Next to it, parcel 68, you'll see is the field school site, so that's the site of recently approved but not yet built private school for 150 students, so somewhat larger in scale than this proposal. And then to the southwest, you can see the Coulter subdivision, and to the northeast, the Mount, Montview subdivision, which are both adjacent to and within view and potentially a sound of the site, and sharing the same road. Here's a closer view of the site as it exists now, and you can see, you could see if the pointer worked. There's currently an entrance down in this corner here, the new entrance would be in this area. And then this is an old pond that would be refurbished to be the stormwater management area for the use. Here's an overview of the conceptual plan for the use, Eric's row at the top, new entrance here. The top right area is the main activity area with the small proposed classroom structures. There's a parking area in that northeast corner. The top left, you've got a pasture fenced area with a small barn for farm animals, and then at the back, you've got this additional activity area with the pavilion, one more classroom building and another restroom back there. So this area right here that I'm pointing to is where the trail would cross the critical slopes. That's what would generate the need for that special exception, as you can see, it's relatively small. But this is a more detailed view of the more active area. Again, this is where the, the majority of the classroom activity would be. And just to clarify why the parking is located at that corner close to the road, which is atypical. But in this case, here's that parking area, and you can see there's a bank of several feet right at that edge of the road. So it actually, by pushing these parking up against that bank, it actually reduces the visibility, because as you're going by, you just look right over it. Alrighty, so we did review the proposal against all of these criteria. We didn't have major concerns about things such as noise and visual impacts because of the location of the use and some of the recommended conditions that I'll go through at the end. In one area that we did get a lot of feedback was about safety and traffic concerns along Barracks Road. So there are a couple, there are actually a few issues about traffic. The first is speed, the posted speeds here start at 45 and go up to 50. Widely reported by residents in the area that those are regularly exceeded in this area, so we know there's a speed problem already at the site. Second is the site distance issue. Approaching the site from the east, so going west on Barracks Road, here in this photo, we're about 750 feet from the proposed entrance. And this hill on the left is completely obscuring the view of the site. So if there were to be, during the drop-off hour, a line of cars waiting to turn into the site, you wouldn't be able to see those, and please recognize that this Google car view is mounted much higher than a typical driver's view down at two or three feet off the ground. So there's going to be a very limited view because of that hill of the stopped and turning vehicles at that site. At this point, once you get up to Montview Drive, about 525 feet out, you can start to see where the entrance is going to be down there. So you, you do at that point have a, a line of sight on the start, the stopped vehicles. Problem being that if the traffic was in fact going 45, this would be quite a bit of site distance, since we know that traffic tends to go more like 60. It's pretty limited to come around that corner and see a stop line of cars. As far as accident history, we checked on five years' worth of reports on this section from Coulter Stride west of the site to Burgoyne Road here to the east of the site. There have been 18 accidents in that period. Most of them are related to turning movements at intersections and access points, which is what raised our concern higher about the visibility and the speed around this new proposed entrance. So given all that, we felt that even though for the posted speeds, VDOT might not require, when we get to the site plan stage, that turn lanes be built based on the regular warrant formulas. This particular situation has an existing speed problem and an existing visibility problem that need to be mitigated. So if the use is going to be approved, we felt the turn lanes were necessary to get that stopped and turning traffic out of the main line of traffic. So in summary, positive factors included the scale of the proposed use and its limited physical impacts on the site. Could use a screening vegetation and parking placement to reduce the visual impacts. The site is located on a major collector road with proximity to the development area, so it's less traffic impact on the rural areas overall than some of the more remote sites that we've seen over the years. And it would provide an opportunity for natural resource-based education. The concerns, the negative factors were the intensity of use, which is more than the buy rights is on the site, and traffic generation, and the existing high-traffic volumes and speeds that are above the posted limits, which is why we're recommending the turn lanes again. So I won't read through all the conditions, we have several recommended conditions of approval, which I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about. I think I'll stop there and just take your questions, thank you.
So questions for staff on this application? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, sir. Or the, what do you call these? Drawing a blank, there's nine of them. What do you call them? Conditions, yes. I'm so sorry. It has been, it's not even close to over. So for like number four, for example, where it talks about putting parameters on how many times the school can be used and for certain size crowds, just curious, how does the county kind of monitor or enforce that? How do you know if the school has done five events versus three versus eight?
It's difficult, we don't have staff obviously to be on the ground monitoring constantly. Typically, issues like that are monitored by complaint. If there are residents nearby who are aware that there are too many events going on, then they'll let us know, and then we'll have to check. In rare cases, we have asked for people like with very large winery events, but this is something at a much larger scale, to notify us in advance of their event schedule. But again, we're talking about events of 500 or 1,000 people. It seems more appropriate then to have advanced warning than for a small school event of 50 people.
Sure, thank you, and there's one more question regarding the, the comment about the speed that's currently speeding currently occurring on that street. When are we allowed to, I guess, have like the school zone speed limit, you know, reduction so that that could potentially, if we're allowed to do that, make it a little bit safer?
One of the neighboring landowners raised that same question, and I checked in with VDOT about that, and they said that it was unlikely that they would do school zone postings in an area where there's no pedestrian access. But typically, that's done for, when you're approaching an area that has crosswalks and kids crossing the street and all that, there's not going to be pedestrian access to the school. It's going to be all vehicle access, so I don't believe that VDOT would institute that kind of signage.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thanks, and thank you Scott, it was a great presentation, very helpful. Couple of quick questions, one kind of related to Commissioner Claiborne's question. Number three, where it talks about classroom instruction not beginning before 8:30 and not continuing past 5:30. And then the, the question I had was classes shall not be held on Saturday or Sunday, is it just classes that won't be held? Or is it events, or does that, is it limited in some other way? And, and if so, was that a request of the applicant or a request of the county?
That's a condition we've used before, including at the field school adjacent to the site. And it's just of, an attempt to limit the overall impacts. So we're holding, over the course of the year, you know, there's only five days a week that you're going to have those arrival and departure impacts from the regular business of the school. It's not intended to apply to an event where if they had an educational event or a fundraising event or something like that, yeah, that could well be on a weekend.
Got it, okay, good to know. And, okay, or some alternative use that was allowed in the district, yeah. And then the second question is about traffic, and I know a lot of what we're going to talk about tonight may be about traffic. And I'm just curious, from a county standpoint, is there, I don't know if precedent's the right word, but is it, since speed limits are sort of an objective measure, right? That you're exceeding the speed limit, it's either not being policed or something's kind of out of the control of the land owner or the, the applicant, really. It's really more of a VDOT or a police requirement. Is it common that, or is it, is there precedent for the county to limit the use of that facility based on adjacent speed limit? You know, people that are violating adjacent speed limits? Seems like it's outside of the applicant's control, I'm just curious.
Yeah, but obviously for the standards that apply for a, a buy right site plan for use, we're going to be evaluating that based on just what you said, formulas and existing posted speeds and all that.
Yeah.
With a legislative approval like this, where one of our main factors is to consider is public safety.
Yeah.
And where we know we've got an existing safety situation, or a couple of them in this case. We're, we're recommending that additional step of safety requirements, which, you know, obviously do have expenses for the applicant in order to install that.
Yeah.
It's to ameliorate that existing safety situation that, you know, this is not a buy right use, this is a more intense use in the rural areas, and it could work on the site, but we've got to offset the impacts, just like we would for any other safety issue.
Got it, okay, thank you.
I have a question. I mean, is it possible that you could go over the, the traffic numbers generated by the site? I, I found that the trip generation graphs confusing and
I, I would be happy to talk about it, but I think you might get a better and clearer and more complete statement on that from the applicants, and I know they're preparing to address just that.
All right, fine, that's, that's fine by me, all right, any, yes.
So, so we're talking about how do we enforce things, which some of my colleagues are, are speaking to here. So number two is the maximum enrollment shall be 60 students. How, how would the county know that that's the capacity that's, that, that they've reached or that they're
Again, if there was a complaint, then we would request that the applicant or the operator at that point would provide their enrollment information.
Okay, and do we have any, any idea whether or not this is a pre-K through 5th grade or
It's a middle, it's a middle school.
Excuse me?
It's a middle school.
And what's, middle school is different in different places, so what's middle school?
I believe it was 5 to 8, but the applicant will say for sure. Is it a 5 to 8 or 6 to 8, sorry?
5 to 8 or 6 to, 6th grade, either 5th grade to 8th grade, or 6th grade to 8th grade? And then the other thing, and, and this is, this is, this is just my, I'm going to take this statement here. So one of the things that I was concerned about, and I continue to be concerned about, is that when the county takes a position on that, a, a school option for residents of the county would provide natural resource base, and this, this proposal would provide an additional school option. I would just like to go on record that I don't actually think that that's our role, that that's not the role of the Planning Commission to provide an additional school option for people from our, from where we stand. And number one, this is not, so applicant, don't be offended by what I'm going to say, because what I'm going to say is probably going to be offensive. It's that number one, I have no idea the quality of the instructors who will be at the school. From what I understand, private schools don't have to follow the same kind of standards that public schools do. And that when the county is putting in over $200 million worth of budget allocation for our public school system, I don't think it's our role to then say, oh yes, we need an additional private school. And that's not something, I hope that we will see that in the future, that that's not, that's not a bailiwick. We should offer no comments, yes, nay, weigh on whether or not that's a good, bad, or different thing. That's for the market to determine, that's not for us to put our fingers or thumb on the scale. So I just, I need to, I need to say that. And I'll come back, I've got some other things about that.
All right, so, and yeah, I mean, I still haven't heard from the applicant, but it's good for them to hear your concerns. Anything else for staff, just along lines of questions? Clarity, okay, all right, thank you. All right, so next up, we'll hear from the applicant. Just state your name and address, doesn't have to be the exact house number, but go ahead.
My name is Anne Bachmeister. Thank you, Madam Chairperson and the members of the Planning Commission for having us here today. I am the founder and head of school for Foster Forge School. A unique and dynamic private middle school co-ed, hopefully opening here in Albemarle County. Our pedagogy revolves around farm and forest-based education, being outside more than inside as much as possible. Many of our students I see coming out of the pandemic, being disengaged and disconnected from their current school situations, both public and private. A resistance to going back to school, a resistance to feeling like they, they don't have a place in that school. So my background is in law and education. I went to Harvard Graduate School of Education and studied positive risk-taking and adolescent development. Was an outbound instructor, and I created an experiential learning program down on St. Croix in the US Virgin Islands that hosted student and teacher teams that came from all over the country, all over the world to engage in, yeah. Sorry. Okay. And I want to apologize right off the bat that the PowerPoint presentation that is up there, the formatting got all, I'm an Apple girl. So I did it on keynote and then tried to export it, and that's what we have. At least it'll give you a sense of, of who we are. We're at different schools, so our PowerPoint presentation is different too. So I'm long in the tooth and working with kids, especially with experiential education programs, hands-on, working with students that are coming to us from lots of different learning perspectives. And thus, the feeling that a school like Foster Forge incorporating our agriculture-based and nature-based platform would be a nice niche to fill here in Albemarle County. As you probably know, the public school system in Albemarle does not have a working relationship with the Future Farmers Association group anymore. And that the agricultural program has actually been diminished quite, quite a bit. It's the one county out of all the surrounding counties that have kind of dialed back that focus. For our students, we want to dial it up. We feel strongly that relationships with animals, knowing where your food comes from, having opportunities to travel globally as a school group, and having those experiences build confidence and fosters growth. And that's why we're hoping that you're going to, I know, Mr. Bivins, your thought is not to, to focus so much on what this is, but the impact of what this could be to the community, and I couldn't agree more wholeheartedly. But I also think it's my job as the head of school to share with you our vision to be inclusive, to be supportive of families that are coming from different income backgrounds. I, I've worked in very diverse communities, and I don't want to rule that, that caters to only one community that can afford it. So we're working really hard to make this experience as open to all as possible. So I'm going to have Anthony Esselman come on up from our TARA Engineering firm to talk a little bit about the concept plan, but also about the traffic questions. And then I'll answer any more questions for you, okay?
Thanks.
Good evening.
You might need to raise the mic up.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the Planning Commission. Like she said, my name is Anthony Ushman, I'm with TARA Engineering. We were engaged by Foster Forge Farm School to assist with the planning and engineering and surveying on this project. As some of the stuff that Scott already touched on, maybe in here, but the planned school is both small and private and for middle-aged students. This land use requires a special permit in the rural area zoning district. Foster Forge Farm School plans to be unique in its teaching curriculum, leaning towards teaching environmental stewardship, incorporating outdoor learning, and desires to employ environmentally friendly methods in development of the parcel. Special events and activities are limited apart from the daily school activities. Further, the school have, as you know, limited staff as opposed to a traditional school. The school plans to use a, a bus to minimize transportation and trips in and out during the day. And since Foster Forge Farm School is located on Barracks Road, some final site plan work was performed at the concept plan level. The commercial entrance was positioned so that the site distance right and left are adequate per posted speed limits. The information is included on Sheet 3 of the concept plan. I'm not sure if that sheet is included on this presentation or not. In addition, a full turn lane traffic study analysis was prepared. This analysis showed that the turn lanes were not warranted, and I do want to take the time to address the fact that this analysis is done pretty early on in the concept and planning stages. And we understand that, you know, it is subject to VDOT's approval, and we are fully prepared to work with VDOT to achieve an adequate solution for the entrance there. work with VDOT to achieve an adequate, um, solution for the entrance there. One thing to note that would be helpful for the safety of, of the entrance would be to post school signs or even possibly move the speed limit change to just west of the school's location or entrance. Concept plan has gone through county staff and regulatory review and has been revised to address all comments. Further, as a part of the special permit procedure, a community Zoom meeting was held and comment responses were prepared. The majority of these comments stem from traffic. The concept plan was revised over time to eliminate as many special exceptions and requests as possible. The ones remaining are critical slopes and no curb or gutter. Except one small isolated trail area, the critical slope disturbance only occurs within the existing stormwater basin. Um, and this will need to be upgraded to comply with current stormwater regulations. And regarding to the curb and gutter, um, it's our opinion that it's environmentally better to allow stormwater to sheet flow rather than to force it into concentrated flow by using curb and storm drain pipes. Grass whales and covert pipes are planned as the site lends itself to that method. Thus, the second special exception to waive the curb requirement. Special event parking.
Go ahead.
Would be, um, designated to, um, the area. The proposed parking area and then there's a event parking as needed that would remain grass. Um, and whether or not reinforcement would be needed in the area would be a study that'd be done closer to the final engineering plan stage. A geotechnical study is planned for the site that would include borings in the dam to confirm adequate foundation for the planned driveway across the dam. And regarding wastewater, an alternate wastewater system is desired and is permitted by the PDH policy. But an alternate drain field in that area is available at the rear of the property, um, down towards the back.
You can keep going. You had technical difficulties getting this presentation started. You have a few more points.
And this, um, drain field was previously approved by the county in order for this land to be subdivided off of the, its parent parcel. The development of the site is planned to be, um, at or very close to existing grade, um, to minimize any required earthwork, um, visual landscaping. Will also be provided, um, as, um, buffers from visibility from the street. Placed in, um, areas as designated by county staff. We thank you for your time and respectfully request your support of this special permit and special exception. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, questions for the applicant?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Is, is there a cafeteria on site?
Not a formal cafeteria.
Have to come up to the mic to answer because it's getting recorded.
Not a formal cafeteria. Um, there will be a small kitchen set up in our science building. For, not only for, uh, curriculum purposes, but also to warm up lunches and things like that. So our students are going to be expected to bring lunch to school.
Okay. So like no grease traps or anything or like needed on site? And, uh, secondly, could you talk a little bit about maybe the materials that you'll be using for the buildings and I, I'm asking because I think I read something about sustainability and your, your narrative and with our climate action plan, just like to, like have a list of better understanding of what you're trying to do with the site and buildings in terms of sustainability.
Well, initially in phase one, our, our buildings are prefabricated and they're small. The whole point of creating and developing the school is to make it as sustainable as possible. And that's built into the education of our students as well. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, solar energy. Pot, the possibility of wind energy, um, incorporating incinerator uh, or composting toilets in our, in our restrooms. Our buildings will be up to international building code and will satisfy the occupancy requirements for the purposes of a school. We will have, um, we propose pavilion and some outdoor space specifically where our kids and, and staff can meet and engage in educational, um, opportunities out, outside of the formal classroom space, if you will.
Yes, thanks. Uh, appreciate your presentation. Couple of quick questions. One is you mentioned a bus.
Yes.
That a bus is being used. Did you factor the use of the bus into your, um, trip generation numbers?
It's, uh, my understanding that we did.
You did. Okay. So the trip generation. And what is the frequency of the buses? Or the number of absorption?
The, the bus will hold fifteen to sixteen students. And it runs, uh, essentially four times a day. So in in the morning and out in the morning and then in in the afternoon and out, out in the afternoon. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, you mentioned that you did calculate the site distances and that they were adequate. That the site you moved, you, actually, I was wondering how you decided to position the entrance where you did, and I think you did it because of site distance. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And so the grades work for site distance. Everything else is, is appropriate.
Yes.
And did you mention that you involved VDOT in any of these conversations or you haven't involved VDOT yet?
We, we have been, um, back and forth with VDOT somewhat on the traffic studies, but we understand that that's kind of an ongoing discussion with them as we kind of has honed down the, the numbers and, you know.
Got it. Okay, uh, thanks. And, um, there's been a question raised about turn lanes, right? Turn in, in, or enter, entrance and exiting turn lanes. You didn't mention any of that in your presentation. I'm curious if you had any position on that, any thoughts on that? I mean, it's for the potentially for the safety of your students and families. I'm just curious what you, what you think as an applicant.
I'm actually in quite agreement with the need for increased safety on this particular stretch of Bericks Road. I think there's a way to, um, find a kind of happy balance in regards to this. Uh, I think some of the responsibility falls on, um, uh, falls with VDOT. Hopefully opening a dialogue with them about what we can work with them to do to mitigate the higher speeds that happen on that road. It could, it could be signage. It could be, um, you know, when you approach a sign and you're, you're over the speed line limit and it flashes at you and lets you know that you're speeding. I, I know when that happens to me, my initial instinct is to slow down. So, um, incorporating those kind of opportunities, I think would make the, the roads safer in general, whether we're there or not. And, um, we have talked about incorporating a, a right-hand turn lane. Which I think, uh, would be very conducive to mitigating the traffic issue, even though we're well below the numbers. So, uh, yeah, I think there's a way and, and once VDOT has, uh, time to really delve deeper into the traffic warrant that we put together.
Yeah.
We'll have a better sense of flushing that out. But there's, there's flexibility. We all want to be safe and we want our neighbors to be safe too. So.
Great. Thank you. And last question, um, what was the timeline for your existing traffic data? Did you take, how did you acquire those counts?
You'll have to bear with me. I was not directly involved in the traffic study, but.
I'm just curious if it was in the middle of twenty twenty, like in the spring of twenty twenty, or if it was earlier than that.
No, it was my understanding that, um, they went back, I think it was a period of five years.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Could you, so let's just stay on traffic and I'm going to pivot off of that depending on your answer. So sir, you mentioned that it might be helpful to have a school sign coming from the west. So that's coming from sort of the, like coming down Garth Road towards Charlottesville. I'm wondering why only that direction, not from both sides?
Think, well, I guess what I had in mind was that it would be helpful to move the, the place where the speed limit changed. Like currently the speed limit drops from fifty to forty-five east of the planned site entrance. And if that was moved west, that would just, that would help as far as traffic speed and safety.
So basically extending, extending the, the zone in which the, uh, extending kind of dramatically the zone that the, um, the speed would drop down. I'm assuming so, from the east to the west. So it's just opening that zone up. Okay. That's, that's helpful. Can I, can I ask you then, I think this is for, for madam, the, the anticipated head. So can you give me some sense of, you said it earlier, I believe it was you that you use classroom occupancy standards to determine the quantum, the sort of the type of buildings that you're going to have there, sort of the, I think they're and, and just wondering if you could sort of tell us a little bit more about what those standards are and where one might find them because I, I tried to sort of understand how you got to this, to the size units that you have there.
And I'm going to apologize because I don't remember her last name off the top of my head, but, um, Betty, uh, who's with the county was very instructive in regards to, uh, looking at occupancy and the number of students per building and, and that kind of thing. So although we're an outdoor school and spending most of our time outdoors, we had to take into consideration that if an emergency arose, we had a tornado or thunderstorms, lightning, we needed a place for our kids to go and find shelter. So, um, in factoring in the square footage for our barn, um, the buildings that you see on the, on the main concept plan, the pavilion doesn't really count because it doesn't have the sides to it. So, uh, knowing our max being sixty students and then incorporating additional staff to that number coming up with about seventy-four. That's how we came up with our occupancy, if you will, uh, to be able to find that adequate shelter, even though most of our classes will be taking place outside in good weather.
What happens when it's not good weather? If you could just sort of give us a sense of, of how, how those, those, those classroom units will be used and how you're integrated into the space because I had a hard time seeing where classroom or where learning would take place outside of those classrooms.
Well, learning can happen anywhere outside those classrooms.
So that's, I, I want not the high level piece, but I want sort of, if you were selling me as a grandparent wanting to put my child there, where would my child, what will my child be doing? And you, and can you skip down to your, instead of using this traffic piece, can you skip down to the, to the, um,
The site?
The site plan.
Okay. So, um, on our current site plan, uh, we have walking trails. We have an outdoor pavilion that can be used for outdoor classroom space and, um, and shelters. There is up in our wooded forest section, uh, there'll be open areas. We're going to incorporate an obstacle course up there. There's a lot of open green space. There's also lots of open, uh, green space with large trees that provide a canopy. So I could see, uh, our students and, and teachers, um, congregating around those trees. You know, I think it's a, it's a spontaneous. It's, you know, in the moment experience as to where the class wants to be on any particular day. What's happening with the weather, what the season is, um, and what they're studying. We have a pond that's going to be, uh, developed again in the middle of the, um, the property. That's going to be remedied, if you will. It's, uh, was part of an old dump site at, at one point in the property's history and our intentions is to bring this land back. So, I, you know, there are many, many different outdoor opportunities for learning.
Let me extend this a little bit. So the, so the, the pond, which is sort of a water, uh, sort of the hand, which right now I think has a has a, a water management sign on it, that you're saying that that's going to have water in it. It's that, you're, you're planning for that to be an active pond.
As part of our storm water management as well. Yeah.
Suppose it's a dry period where there'll still be, are you anticipating water being in there?
Yeah, it's a matter of, um, working with the dam. There's a, um, what do you call it? A culvert pipe. So, um, there's a, there's also some, um, infringing trees that have grown up in this area that are draining water out. So there'd have to be some management of the pond to be able to bring it back.
And then if I can continue please. So then in the front where you have your paddock.
Yeah.
And we still haven't, so we still haven't gone back to the occupancy, but you know, I'll sort of move away from that for the moment. What type of animals are you planning to be in the panic? I couldn't, didn't see a, 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 a full description of that.
Yeah. Um, we intend to have goats, mostly pygmy goats, um, chickens, rabbits. Uh, a donkey or two. More manageable livestock, um, not only for our kids, we hope to be, also be for age facility. Be a member of four H so our students, if they wish to partake in four H activities can. Uh, most of our students are coming from homes where they can't have a baby goat and raise a baby goat and then show. So, um, yeah, we're not, we're not doing pigs and we're not, uh, running cattle. The space is just not conducive to that. But it's very conducive to, um, livestock that are, that, you know, will be, still be able to give our students experiences in regards to the care of them.
Then if I could ask you to just explain something for me on page six of your proposal. And I'll just read it to you. It says, your, our activities in presentation will be in keeping with the spiritual and educational institutions already located in the areas such as the pending field school and the nearby St. David's Anglican Church. I'm just wondering what, if you could just expand that, since I'm not quite sure how, just expand that. I'll just be quiet and let you expand.
Sure. Um, not having the opportunity to talk directly with the church or with field school. I, I guess I'm speaking more towards the openness of, uh, if and when we are on the site and field school opens looking towards doing, um, collaborative, um, educational opportunities together.
And with the Anglican church?
Definitely open.
Something to hope for. Yeah. Sort of hoped for. Okay.
I see it as a real community, um, engagement.
But yet that, that's interesting, but I'm not hearing how we're engaging with something that's sort of close to a thousand neighbors there. I hear those two neighbors, but what about the other neighbors?
Well, I think engaging with the so-called thousand neighborhood neighbors is potentially us educating their children. Being a part of this neighborhood, um, and growing neighborhoods in the, in the county and, and the city of Charlottesville. So, um,
So there'll also be vegetables and things like that.
Absolutely.
Good question.
It's just one more question. It's a follow-up to my, uh, colleague Commissioner Bevins. I don't know much about farm animals. I've been to a dairy farm once and it didn't smell good. You just listed off a, a, a group of animals there. Not sure what the smells and so forth alike, but do your neighbors at the field school have anything to be concerned about on hot summer days with the placement of the paddock?
I, I don't know. And I guess I'd have to hear their concerns if they had concerns. I can tell you from, um, my perspective that we would incorporate, um, responsible farm management, um, in regards to main, you know, maintaining, uh, waste and, uh, you know, removing wastes appropriately. The teaching of raising livestock and, and, and engaging in agricultural studies is about being a steward to the land. Not just to the animals, to, to our neighbors too. So, um, we would make it a concerted effort to be responsible neighbors. And if there were complaints, um, we would address them in short order.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow on on that though. Just curious about the, so the weekends, do you have a caretaker then who takes care of the animals on the weekends?
We'll have someone that will be available for the weekends. Absolutely. Yeah.
And hopefully notify the neighbors who that person is, like the, let's say the chickens get loose or something that you know, they know who to call on the weekend when school's not in session.
Yeah. Well, we've met some lovely neighbors that are excited about what we're doing. So, you know, I, I think with open communication and, um, being, people being able to check in with each other, I, I'm uh, I, I'm looking forward to working with our neighbors to make the schools a success.
Other questions, yes?
One, one additional question, and it's on page eleven of your project proposal, um, and this may fall under the category of hopeful, but, uh, it says, "In addition, Foster Forge Farm School has a potential additional benefit for providing, of providing our neighbor, the field school and his parents, an opportunity for their other children not enrolled in FFFSS, a dual location for student drop-off, reducing the amount of driving time and place where parents would be required to bring their children for school." I'm curious, have you had conversations with, um, with the field school about that, or is again, that's probably something that you're hoping will be?
I think we're hoping and it could be a possibility, that, um, a family has one child at the field school and one child at, at Foster Forge. So, um, uh, I, Charlottesville, Alamo Mall, it's a small community, so I, I could see that as a possibility.
Okay, I was just curious, as it goes to traffic, if it, you know, you anticipated some absorption by sharing rides or not, but probably, since it's, sounds like that's not fully baked yet.
Yeah, and I don't see it as being a large part of our tra- our traffic going in and out, so.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Any else? Let's have a quick question, so you're, you're asking us for sixty student school, and I'm sure you've already experienced what it's like to prepare materials to come before the commission and then eventually the board, should this move forward, uh, are you absolutely certain that sixty is, is the right number? You're not going to be coming back in five years and asking for eighty and then a hundred, I just, because, um, schools like this are often successful, and that's good, but I just wanna get a sense of, um, your, your business plans, because it, it, if we were to approve this this evening for recommendation to the board, we, we'd wanna be certain that, you know, this wasn't just a starting offer, if you will.
Yeah, I think, um, I think I'm very comfortable with the sixty student maximum, and, and that has a lot to do with the size of this property. You know, it, we're dealing with six and a half acres, a little less. So in keeping with, um, this property being sustainable, it has to be sustainable for our student population, but it also has to be sustainable for our farming, population, if you will, our livestock and what we're growing, so, um, I think maxing it be- beyond sixty would be too much. If and when we were ever in a position to really want to, to go, grow larger, I'm a big proponent of small classrooms, um, in smaller, smaller school communities, um, then we'd probably be looking for a different site. But, um, you know, this, this site fits what we're hoping to do for the next five, ten years, so, I, I feel pretty confident that we can move forward with sixty max students.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else before we open to the public? Okay, thank you very much, and we'll now, uh, hear from the public. I have so far, uh, two folks, uh, signed up to speak, but that if you didn't sign up, you can still have a, have a chance at the podium. Uh, we limit, uh, comments to three minutes, and we also ask during, uh, public hearings that people not, uh, voice their opinions from the audience, but if you're in support of something, you can raise your hands if you like. Um, so with that, uh, the first person we have signed up to speak, and I'm sorry, your handwriting might be as bad as mine, Jeff Newman, or Jeep? Jeep, okay. And then after that, we have Saunders Midyet. Can you just, uh, just remind you to state your name and, uh, where you're from?
Okay, I'm Jeep Newman, I live at two eight oh five Barracks Road, which is across Barracks Road from the site we've been talking about. So, I love the questions from the board, and my first, uh, request of the board is to pause this and reschedule it at a later time after you guys have more time to talk about it, and after you hear what I have to say and what other people say. I have talked to Ann about this, so this is gonna be nothing new to her. I said it should not be there, and I've told her that the field school should not be there, and I will tell you why. So, and this is gonna be very brief, and it's all based upon the traffic safety. I mean, everybody has mentioned that tonight, but let me explain what the issue is here, because I don't even think, uh, Vida really understands what's going on here. First of all, it's a straightaway, it's about a mile, and coming out of the city, you wanna go west, you wanna get home, you go fast. These people know they're going fast, they mean to go fast because it's a huge straightaway. Coming east, same thing. You get to the top of the hill, heading east, heading toward, um, Montview Drive, you floor it and you go fast. I constantly hear, uh, deer accidents in the, in the fall. I mean, there must be six or eight, oftentimes I go out and see if anybody's injured. But let me explain, uh, to you if I can, really briefly, in about ninety seconds. So Barracks Road, between the hours of eight and nine, in the school day mornings, there is nobody that stops between Montview Drive and Colthurst. Nobody stops, maybe one percent of people stop. East, that's heading east, nobody stops. Going west in the evening, nobody stops between Montview Drive and Colthurst. Nobody stops, because there's nobody there. I own three driveway entrances across the street, and I know nobody's using those, and there is a, a house or two down on the lower, uh, part of Barracks Road to the south, north, uh, west, somebody may turn it, but not at those hours. But what these schools do, both the field school and Old Forge, is that what it's called? They're gonna have people stopping right at the highest speed to stop and make a right-hand turn into the schools in the morning, which is gonna have, you're gonna stop that traffic coming in from, from the west, and it's gonna be reversed. They're gonna be making a, a left out of there to go west in the evening, and the, the traffic is flying home. So, the, the, the fact that it's a collector road, it's very accurate, and it's only gonna get more, uh, busy because of what's happening on Ivy Road with Orthopedic Hospital UVA just opened, and with Sin Terrors building they just built. And so that is the reason that the, uh, Barracks Road is a collector road, because everybody's coming from process, so they don't get jammed up on Ivy Road. And that's all I have to say, and I'm gonna ask Ann, right now, withdraw this application. So thanks very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newman. All right, Saunders Midyet?
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, and planning commission members. I'm Saunders Midyet, I'm in the Colthurst Farm neighborhood where I've lived since nineteen ninety-one. Thank you for this opportunity to express my opposition to the farm school. My first reason for opposing is that the farm school's Barracks Road vehicle exit is very close proximity to the top of the eastern hill. At that ha- at that hilltop, on the very busy Barracks Road, fast-moving westward vehicles can't see around that long curve, which has a fifty mile per hour speed limit, and could potentially result in severe rear-end collisions with vehicles, uh, waiting to enter the, uh, school, as well as those just leaving the school. My second major reason for opposing is my understanding that for use by students and staff, the farm school's planned three classroom prefab trailers and an assembly hall prefab trailer will have no concrete foundations. Thus, in the event of a tornado, hurricane, severe windstorm, students and staff in those trailers could be exposed to significant injury, loss of life. Liability suits arising from such weather disasters could be expected to include the county of Alamo Mall as the defendant. Apart from opposing this application, I'm aware that earlier this calendar year, on its Barracks Road site, the farm school placed three different types of classroom prefab trailers without first obtaining approval of the county. Upon learning about this, it is my understanding that the county ordered the site removal by the farm school, which occurred. Yesterday, and, and web Googling the farm school, I came across a February eighteenth updated, uh, website, which announced that the farm school has announced its coed opening for students grade five through eight. This website's discovery was surprising, inasmuch as Alamo County has not yet acted upon the farm schools of application. So I recommend denial, just would note, uh, you have a letter from me that includes other reasons, one of which is the concern twenty-four seven of animal noise, particularly braying donkeys.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing, is there anyone online? Just a moment, is there anyone online?
No ma'am, there isn't.
Okay, all right, now, now you may come up, I just needed to make sure that there was no one else from the public. So you're welcome to address any of the comments you heard or add anything else from your, didn't get to say earlier.
I, I don't wanna interrupt, I do believe there are a couple people that do wanna speak, that may, may not have signed up.
Well, that, that's what I just asked for.
Um, my name is Tyler Sewell, I live at fifteen forty-five Old Ballard Road in, in Alamo County. Two things, one, this school is mostly based on a, on a school that, that Ann and I went to a- as children, and, it profoundly changed my life, I was a C and D student in the Virginia Beach Public School system that was falling through the cracks, and had I not gone to a school like this, uh, I would not be where I am today. It saved my life completely, and I got into, to the University of Virginia because I had teachers that really, um, helped me with my ADD and, and, and helped transform my life. And this school is about unleashing the excellence of every kid, and someone like myself, who was more focused on art than athletics, was allowed to spend his time doing what he really wanted to do, and it, it changed my life. And so that's why I believe so wholeheartedly in the school. The second point is I understand the issues with traffic, um, but it seems like everyone's saying, hey, everyone breaks the law on this road, they speed, they speed, they speed. Is that the applicant's fault? I mean, that shouldn't be her issue, that's the issue of the road. And I hope maybe we could find a way to mitigate that, and maybe the school could actually help foster slowing speeds. And thirdly, there's already been a school approved next door that's much larger. So that's my thoughts, thank you very much.
Thank you, all right, last call for anyone else from the public. Seeing no one, the applicant now can come back and address any of the comments heard or anything else you wanna add.
Oh, thank you, and first of all, I wanna thank everyone for all your comments. I, I do wanna address the issue around, um, this perception that, that Foster Forge is gonna be placing trailers on the property. Uh, we will be placing prefab buildings, uh, that will be secured, um, pursuant to, you know, the building inspector and building, international building codes. Um, the wind shears will be appropriate, um, all of that will be presented when we, um, uh, submit our final site plan. So, and the, and the buildings that were placed temporarily, uh, weren't on wheels, um, they had, were set on concrete block to keep the sills off the ground. But just kinda get a sense of, of placement and, and how that would work. So they're now in storage in Harrisonburg, and once we, um, do get the building department to sign off on, on the plan, trust me, I, I'm an attorney by training, I'm liability pho- phobic, and I do not want anyone to be sued over, um, whether or not our buildings are sufficient, uh, to keep kids safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll bring this back to the commission for discussion. Here's what are your impressions so far? Concerns? Wants to go first?
We're, we're all too polite.
It's Julian's turn, but we will all speak, go ahead.
You're all gonna speak, so that, that's not, that's not, that's not the issue, I expect you all to speak. So I wanna be very clear that I'm not focused on the traffic right now. I will let others speak to that, I'm focused on whether or not this is the right and proper use for this five, for this, for this piece of property. And, um, and I also wanna be very clear that the idea that's being, that's being, um, presented to us isn't, is, is in fact a fine idea. What I have a problem is the, this is not the right idea for this location. And so let me sort of push a little bit on that, you heard me earlier talk about the whole idea of the rural suburbanish of this area, I know any of you have been out there. This is not, uh, like Scott's, like, like the, um, like Whitehall, this is not like Scott's, uh, Scottsville off of twenty, or I should go like that. Um, this in fact is, 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 uh, Barracks Road, and with lots and lots of commu- lots of houses and lots of people live out there. So the whole idea that we're going to, even though it says rural, and this is part of what I was talking about, these hard lines, even though it's a rural area, is this the appropriate place to have farm animals? Uh, I'm particularly concerned about the farm animal issue, considering particularly what we're wrestling with in the world with the transmission of viruses coming from animals and the whole idea of what we've had going on in the valley with avian flu, and the whole idea that there's this whole emerging sort of human animal sort of set of illnesses that come through. I will share personally that I am one who is suffering from one of the tick diseases, from a whole series of tick diseases because of where we live, and, and sort of the wooded area where we live. And so I'm concerned from that aspect, this, uh, the, the sort of how do we in this heavily wooded, in this, with animals right next, next to sort of, uh, to the population, which children are gonna be going, how are we going to ensure that those kinda zoonotic, uh, transmissions don't take place between animals and humans, uh, particularly with some of the, some of the animals that, uh, that the anticipated head has noted there. So that's, so that's sort of that form does not work for me. Animals right there does not work for me at that point, combined with, on such a small spot with, um, I think that's inappropriate with such a small spot, given, given the, um, uh, given, uh, the activities are gonna go there. So I'm really focused on the public health, safety and general welfare. I also have to say that I'm, I, I continue to be somewhat concerned with classrooms that are about two hundred and forty square feet, and, and how, even though there are, I think there's six of them or seven of them, and even though I'm, so I, I need to caveat this, even though I realize that the public school standards don't apply to private schools, but if this were a public school, the classroom size would be nine hundred square feet. For the screen, it is. So that's what the public school, if we were putting a public school there, they would have to have nine hundred square feet. And if we were public, putting a public school there with that age group, we would need a larger, a, a larger site. So the site works for an elementary school size, but doesn't work for, for middle, for a middle, for middle school size, given if this was a public school, granted, this isn't a public school, but I have to say, if this is a place where from this, from this body, I am suggesting that this is a fair use for this area, I can't do this because it doesn't meet sort of the minimum standards that a public school would have to meet there from that standpoint. The other thing that I, 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 I sort of wrestled with there, I sort of wrestled with there, is that I also don't understand how the space would be ADA compliant. This feels very, in quotes, uh, forestal, I'll use that term instead of rural. And so I don't know how you're going to get children from the front part of that to the back part of it, where the pavilion is. I don't know how this, how this particular location works for, for that kind, for that kind of student. I've also would, would sort of share, it does, I don't care a hill of beans of what the field school does, that's not relevant to this decision. First of all, whoever knows that the field school's even gonna get constructed, so I could care less on whether or not, whether or not this there. I care simply about, in this location, is this the right function, is this the right educational function, when A, it's got smaller classrooms than we would have if it was a public school? When A, it's got smaller classrooms than we would have if it was a public school. We have, the classrooms are so small that we could put all of them in the paddock. The paddock is larger than all the school classroom. That's troubling for me. And then, as I said, this is not the whole idea of this having this mixture of animals there. Giving some of the issues that we've had with the transmission of from animals to humans for particular diseases is absolutely alarming to me that this would happen in this particular place. So I, I have, well, I said, what would I say? I'm not in support of this and it has nothing to do with the traffic. The traffic's a reasonable thing that people can talk about. It has to do is, is this the right function for that particular location? And when I looked at the, looked at the standards under the health, public health, safety and general welfare of those little, of the children who would go there, I have to come down with no.
Okay. So that's, that's where you stand at this moment?
There, that's where I will be standing.
All right. Well, we'll still hear other perspectives, I'm sure.
That's right.
On the dice. Steve Major's well known. Who would like to go next? Fred?
Sure. Thanks. And thanks, everybody, for your comments and for the public comments. All very helpful. So I, in my discussion, it's a couple of things, more than a couple. But I know Julian, you mentioned you're not focused on, on traffic. I'm going to probably focus on traffic.
That's good.
I know it's a good balance. And a few other things. So what is, you know, I tend to focus on the things that are measurable and quantifiable and objective. So I try to sort of limit it to that and think through that. So number one, what, you know, sort of what do we know? Right under the heading of what do we know? Number one, we know this is in a rural area. Number two, we know the traffic controls adjacent on a major collector road are failing. Number three, we know that an adjacent school, although it may never be built, has been approved and it's about three times the size of this school. We know that there's a committed staff from what I can tell, although we just met, that's passionate about the mission of the school. We know that it's a private and not public school, so it meets and is required to meet different standards. I believe that the buildings and the site will be required to meet public health, safety and welfare and building code standards. Those are in place. They can't build the buildings and have them occupied without it. And I trust the operators to define and program the uses on the site. They know better than I do how this would generally operate. None of this is to say that I don't take incredibly seriously the risk that has been identified by adjacent landowners and that seems to be present on the roads. I feel like if we're going to focus on traffic, which I'll take that sort of angle. There half, and I was actually going to ask for Mr. McDermott if he has some thoughts on this. I'm not sure if that's appropriate or not, but.
You can ask him to come up. He's here.
Mr. McDermott, do you mind? I feel like I'm talking about.
That's why he's here. Not just because he couldn't think of what else to do this evening. It's just for you.
I'm watching you give me the stink eye every once in a while. So I just want to make sure that I'm saying the right thing. No, but.
Rest in case. Just go ahead.
Thanks for being here. So tell me if I'm off on this, right? This is, as we said, an adjacent collector road that it seems like is not necessarily being regulated in terms of speed. So this is a little bit of hearsay, right? We don't actually have the facts down. But I'm curious, we've talked about things like mitigating, you know, approaches like signals and flashing, you're going too fast signs and school zones and turn lanes and all of those kinds of things. As a professional engineer, as a traffic engineer for the county, what, what is your take on all of this relative to traffic?
Kevin McDermott, planning manager over the transportation division. I reviewed the proposal and their traffic assessment and worked with Scott, the lead planner, on addressing the, those conditions that we put in there. Primarily the condition for the turn lanes, which were not in the initial proposal for this. And VDOT is reviewing the, that, the, the turn lane warrant analysis that was performed. We don't know where they're going to fall on that. But my belief was that because of the, the speeds on that road, which I, I think that the, that the public has identified correctly that we, that that is a really fast section of Barracks Road. And because of the, the site distance issues, that the turn lanes should be implemented there. Beyond that, I mean, I think that things like those flashing signs, we have used those before. It looks like they do work to reduce speeds somewhat. Although we also see that people get used to them if they sit in one place for a while. So it may slow some people down, but it's not going to slow everybody down. But things like the idea of changing the speed limit, reducing the speed limit or extending the, the lower speed limit section. I, I don't think that's going to work. People are ignoring the speed limit as it is. If we put, change the speed limit, it's just going to make people ignore it even worse. And the county doesn't have the resources to have police out there often enough to be able to address the problem. We've tried it. We're, we're aware that there is speeding in this area and the police do go out there sometimes and try and address it. But it's not enough to keep that speed down. So my opinion was that if they were to implement those, those turn lanes, I think that that would address for, for this level that we're looking at for the sixty students. I think that would address the, the issue with the, the safety of the road. But as I said, a school zone, which is possible but unlikely, or those other flashing signs that tell you the speed would, would help a little bit more, but those cost money as well. The, the signs do.
That was, that was a great summary. That was very helpful. One related question, I guess, if I remember hearing that there had been measured, was it eighteen accidents in this stretch of roadway?
Yes, that, that stretch is not just that, that straightaway, but it goes, I think Scott pointed out the areas where it goes to. So it included those intersections and that's what we're seeing is that, that straightaway stretch is not necessarily the problem. The problem is at the intersections. But here, you know, the proposal is to put a new commercial entrance, which is sort of like an intersection in that straightaway. So that's part of the fears that that could increase the safety issues out there. But I once again believe that appropriate turn lanes could mitigate that.
And then the last question related to that is, are you aware of any signal warrant analyses that have been done that might change the flow of traffic at any of those intersections that?
There, I, there's, I doubt if that would need any signal warrant analysis to put a signal in anywhere throughout there. There's not enough traffic on the, on the minor street approaches comparative to the major street. So I do not believe a, a signal would be appropriate.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Can, can I ask one clarifying question just for being naive? Going to add two turn lanes would dramatically increase the width of the road there. So is this provision, I guess I, I understand is, you know, wasn't going to talk about, is this condition in here even possible? Or is it, it just for my clarity, is it requiring VDOT to also buy, you know, what, what is the mechanism for that to, for that to be feasible? That, that condition to be able to go to turn lanes? Does VDOT have to buy in? Do we have to have easements? Is it, you know, is there a lot beyond that? Just so I can understand what that means.
That would fall on the applicant to, to be able to construct those. They would, they would be reviewed by VDOT. I, I've spoken with VDOT about that. They don't, they, they, although they're not sure, because we haven't finished our war, the review of the warrant analysis. They're not sure if the warrants were actually met, but they do still support the idea of turn signals because of the prevailing issues. Or I'm sorry, turn lanes because of the prevailing issues out there. So we think that the turn lanes would be approved by VDOT. But yes, the applicant would have to be able to acquire the right of way or, you know, be able to shift the road enough onto their property to accommodate those turn lanes. It, it could be difficult. There's not denying that.
That's, that's, thank, thank you.
So they would, they would have to acquire the right of way to install the turn lanes. They couldn't put their turn lanes in the right of way?
I haven't, I haven't evaluated the right of way, but if they can't fit the turn lanes in the existing right of way, then it would be their responsibility to either acquire right of way on the opposite side or find a way to shift it to their side.
I see. Got it. Okay.
And that's difficult with VDOT standards for like the curvature of the road. You can't bend the road too much. They may not be able to put it on their end property.
And you haven't looked at turn and taper and all that, like the tapered distance versus the.
With the, we would probably, the VDOT requirements are typically two hundred foot turn lane, two hundred foot taper. So about four hundred feet on each side.
So the frontage that they, well, maybe we're getting too much in the weeds. Okay.
Those can be, those can be reduced if they put in a waiver, though if they said that they don't think they're going to see that much turning traffic, then those distances could be reduced to make it more feasible.
Got it. Thank you.
Right.
Sure. Thank you.
Fred, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
I won't rehash much of what you've heard, but I do have concerns about the proposal. Mainly about the location and it's not that against the school at all. It sounds like it's a wonderful school with a wonderful scope and wonderful impacts. But as I, if you notice some of the questions I asked throughout all of tonight, some of the concerns I have is about the placement of different elements on the site and where is that along Barracks Road? And then the transportation element, the safety piece is really concerning to me. So at this point, I would not be in favor as presented at this point.
Okay. I have, I have some comments, but Daniel, do you, did you have anything else? Okay. So there's so much that's been raised. I don't even know where to start. I would say that, that the traffic speed is concerning to me as well. But I'm, I'm also, and I don't want to say that the parents driving their kids to school would be the guinea pigs. But in a sense, if you are the motorist driving in from somewhere else and you realize there's a school or two there and that it often has cars backed up and you don't want to kill yourself, you realize you need to slow down around that area. So I think that once the school becomes established, people will learn, these commuters that are speeding and that they have to slow down there. It's going to be traffic calmed by cars waiting to turn. You know, again, I want to also remind us that we turned down a summer camp in a remote area with a traffic volume of probably ten cars per day because we said that the road was too skinny and too rural and not at, you know. So here we have a, a well-designed, well-made road, even if the turns and the sight lines are not what we would like. And, and we want to turn that down because while the road is, is, is actually overdesigned, right? The reason people speed, they drive the design speed. The road, VDOT often overdesigns roads so that you can go, you know, a third faster than what the posted speed limit is. That's on VDOT. So I'm, I'm not going to allow that element to influence my, my vote on this this evening. I think in terms of the classrooms, they probably are a bit on the small side because I, you know, this is not a school happening in Florida. You know, this was a rough, rough winter and, you know, they would, those kids would have had to be inside quite a lot. You know, I get it. They can put on their mittens and their boots, but there's going to need to be a lot of time inside. But I submit to you that since they're having the buildings brought in, they're not, they, they are trailering in buildings. And our own county has kids in trailers right now, just remind you. So, you know, that is an acceptable standard, apparently. Not to me, but our county does that. If they learn that this kids are squished and miserable and unhappy and complaining to their parents, they'll probably have to get some larger, slightly larger buildings, right? So that, that problem will make itself known, just like when you move into that house you thought was going to be so huge. Didn't realize now it seems really small after you put all your furniture and family and dogs and cats in it. So I, I just think that that is something that is easily solvable. One thing that appeals to me about this site, which is different from a, another project that was a camp actually down in my district that we also rejected. This footprint is quite light on the land. Oh, this was the one that never came to us because it had so many problems. This, this footprint is, yeah, it's, it had so many problems. But this, this footprint is very light on the land. So when I'm thinking about taking a rural property and allowing it to be used for a more intensive use, the way that they propose to use this property is not very intensive, right? So I've seen other proposals for camps with, you know, tennis courts and swimming pools and huge caf, cafeterias and facilities that almost makes me feel like they're not really building a camp, but actually a retreat that they plan to market as a, you know, adult, you know, I don't know what getaway center. This, it would be very easy where this school to fail or where this used to change. It would be very easy for a different use to come in there successfully. Because they're not doing traumatic things to the land. As far as the animals and my family had a farm that we just played weekend farmer on. We, we didn't need to earn a living at it. We were very lucky in that respect. But I, a lot of kids in Alamo County go home and take care of their donkeys, their chickens and their, their whatever animals. I mean, I live in a rural area and there are a lot of people with, you know, an animal or two on their property or more, even on small lots in the rural area. And, and I think that allowing our children to have that relationship with animals and with the landscape is, is a gift. And for some, I, I'm just revealing about myself, I wrote curricula and taught outdoor camps for years. So I am very well familiar with a kid that maybe wasn't doing well in school and, and thrived under learning about science in the field instead of in a test tube. So I am leaning in favor of this because I think that it, it is light footprint. It, it is easy for them to adapt their, their site if it's not working as they intended with so much outdoor activity. I think that there are parents who are looking for a different kind of experience for the kids than the typical brick and mortar. And at our schools, we're taking away more and more recess and we have less and less opportunity for kids to get outside, less field trip experiences. So, you know, the market will determine whether or not this is a successful and desired model. It's not up to us. But I, I think that with the conditions the staff has outlined in their report, including the requirement for the turn lanes, which is of course not our purview to decide whether and how it will work. Probably applicants would prefer not to have that condition, but I think that that's absolutely necessary to make it work. So from, from my perspective, I, I think that there's still some details to be worked out with the site plans. The lack of curb and gutter don't concern me because actually I think that helps maintain the rural feel of the site. And it would allow some of the stormwater to sheet flow into the woods and offsite instead of channeling it into a nearby creek. You know, so that's, that's kind of where, where I land on this. I think it's a relatively light footprint. I think people will get used to needing to slow down even just because if the field school comes in. And I think that, that this can be solved because I, at a certain, you know, our whole, if you look at our county, I mean, if you ask VDOT, like which roads are up to sta, how many, what percent of your roads are up standard? I mean, most of them are not because they were all old and built in weird dimensions and weird turns. And, and, and then some of our modern roads are overdesigned. So there is no perfect situation. There are certainly situations in Alamo County where I'd say no way could that entrance be in that location. But in this case, I don't see it as, doesn't reach my level of security. Everyone has their own standards that they're applying to this. But for me, I'm, I'm comfortable that these are solvable problems for this site. So that's, that's where I'm landing. I asked him.
Yeah, I, well, I think Commissioner Bivin said it and it's what makes it a little challenging. But as, as I look at it, I was like, this isn't a transition zone. I mean, when you look at it, it is right down the street from Barracks and, and everything else. And I mean, it's considered in the rural area. It's really kind of in the suburbs. Yeah. It's, 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 it's not, which I, I see, you know, I, I see why it's an attractive site for a school because it's in what really is more of a transition area than a rural area, which allows people to get there and bring their kids that live in that and it provides that convenience. When I think about it is, you know, I know we're, this is our job in a sense is to think about the future planning in twenty and ten years and when we know that, that use. If we look at it strictly as a school, schools are everywhere, rural area and the thing. So I think from, from a school perspective, I do find, you know, I didn't get a chance to fully look at it, but I'm assuming they would still have to provide by the ordinances for caring for animals in, in a rural area. And this is a rural area and there's nothing to prevent the neighbor next door to have animals per pursuant to the ordinance.
Animals on that lot right now.
Animals on a lot right now. And so while I, I respect that, it is still a rural designation. And so if they're able to have animals and other people able to have animals, I don't have as much concern about having animals. in this um as has been expressed. Um, I, I do have concerns about the road mainly because of its locations, the curve that exists in that road right there. And it doesn't take a lot for someone to come around a curve and hit it. And so I would say that I would, at this point, be supportive provided the, the turn lane and some of those mid-game factors and the um conditions remain um for the right and left turn lane. I, we don't know where the students are coming from, so I can't right here say whether it's going to back up the east lane or the west lane or what time of day it's going to back up. And it only takes one car turning against the traffic that's coming in to back up the traffic forever. And there, there's an issue on the hand. So without, without some type of mitigation given its proximity to the curve for the turn movements, I would have a higher time support unless those conditions were met.
Well, um, you certainly, I mean, the conditions, you, these are all the recommended staff conditions, which include those turn lanes. And like we said, it's not up for, to us to design that or figure out if it's feasible.
Exactly. And, and, and I think that was, it was never, it was never expressed. So I was trying to get clarification on what it makes. But you know, our, my recommendation would be that if they exist and stay, that it takes a right and left turn lane. Because some of the dialogue, it was that it would only be a right turn lane. I think it has to be both to facilitate the movement for this use to work at the site at this location.
Right. And, and this, and if you just kept it as what the staff have, they have both left and right turn lanes that meet V dot standards as a mandatory condition. So if they weren't able to satisfy V dot, if you had said, nope, this doesn't cut it, then they can't do it. That would, that would stop it.
That is correct. From my understanding of what Mr. McDermott said.
All right. So where are we?
I'm not sure, just um if, to make it clear and fair for the applicant, I'm not sure if I actually stated my position specifically. But my position would be to support staff's approval of the request with the conditions. Just so everyone's clear.
And there was also, um, and I might need help from our council. There was two exceptions that they were looking for. One was a steep slope waiver for the trail to go across the steep slope. And then there was the curb and guttering. Is that in the, we would have to add those exceptions if we were willing to grant those.
Those special exceptions are not actually on the agenda, excuse me.
Okay.
For tonight um and have not been, we only received them recently. They have not been fully reviewed by staff. So as we said early in the presentation, we expect that to happen along with the final site plan or the site plan review. They didn't really breeze any issues that we thought they had to be totally resolved before the special use permit because they seem generally appropriate and, and minor in scale. So they're not actually on the agenda for tonight. Yeah.
Okay. So that you're, it's, they're just being flagged for us to let us know that that needs to be solved. And were we deeply concerned about their ability to be solved? We could say, okay, ho- halt. Okay.
Right.
Go ahead.
So I, I, I would, I had some concern about the lack of sidewalks and gutters. Because if, if so much of the activity is outside of those two hundred and forty square foot shelters or classrooms and these are the age of children who love to just take off and do things, okay? Then I think there's something that needs to be put there that has to sort of give them some context for not running in the streets and not running in the road. And so I actually did have a problem with that. So I should just sort of declare that right now.
Okay. Were you coming?
We always, thank you. Rebecca Ragsdale, Planning Manager for Development Review. We knew the questions would come up about the special exceptions. The applicant just submitted them recently and we're recommending that they request to defer them so we can handle this at site plan. Um, but that request will have to come from the applicant. By ordinance, we have to um act on them with ninety day, within ninety days. So they would need to make that request. In general, staff is okay in general with these special exceptions. Um, and you can provide any comments that you'd like for the record going forward. With regard to the pedestrian, um, some of these things are going to be covered with the site plan ordinance. There's language in there that would support us reviewing these things at site plan. And they've um provided trails, you know, they may provide it in the form of a trail and not a sidewalk. But we haven't gotten to the full list of waivers as well. When the county engineering looked at it, we said curb and gutter definitely. But if there's anything else that comes up at site plan, we would recommend it be handled in.
It be handled then. Okay.
Then, yeah, handled then. Sorry.
Okay. Thanks. Now that I, I'm having trouble hearing with the air conditioning going. I know. I just, I just get, I'm getting old. That's right. Um, okay. Well, then that, that, that clarifies that for me, that applicant would need to come forward with a proposal. They'll address that at the site planning stage. Um, and I hope that the applicant will be investing in a very excellent gator that's large enough to take kids in a hurry when they fall down and hurt themselves and they need to get to the entrance. Yeah. Yeah, great. So um, yeah, I, I worked at a disability organization uh for several years. And so I'm actually really well aware of the ways to get kids around, out in the woods. And I think that they could still accommodate kids with various disabilities and that. There's even a, an outward bound course in our county for kids with disabilities. So um, I think that, I think that that can be dealt with. So um, it seems like there, there is a general sense of support for this, maybe not unanimous. But I'm wondering if any commissioner would be willing to make a motion, either for or against. I think we've, I mean, I think we've covered all the topics that we wanted to cover. If there's something else anyone wants to bring up or discuss further, we certainly can.
Yeah. And the only thing that I would say is that many of us have used the sort of what could possibly be if something goes south. And um, I'm uncomfortable doing that because then the whole, the whole sort of scope of possibilities is available for something. And that's not what's before us. What's before us is, is, is the plan that's here. And so if that goes south, that goes south. And I don't necessarily know that I feel comfortable sort of hypothesizing or putting a, a range of hypotheses out there that this is what can happen if this is, if this doesn't happen, you know. So, so I, I'm saying, and I, and I respect your chair on what you, what you said, but this is for this project.
Sure.
And it doesn't matter if parents have some other thoughts or if they couldn't do it with some other thoughts. This is what they're asking us to do. And um, so on that sense, I, I, I want to contain myself to this because you know, we're all creative. So we could, we could craft a scenario that would work for this process, but that's not what we're asked to do. We're asked to deal with the scenario that was presented to us. And it's on that basis that, that I still, I can't support this because the scenario that's before us, I think, is untenable for that spot. I should share with you, perhaps you don't know, but the community that, the big community that's behind it only has one house, the major house that has horses and their covenant in the um, in the cultess co- covenants, they don't allow domesticant, they don't let, they allow farm, farm animals. So that's not, we were speculating that, you know, that lots of people behind us. I just want.
Had, had this been, if my, this was already answered, so I didn't have to ask it. But had they been planning to put cattle, horses, any large hoofed animals, I already knew this site was too small for that and inappropriate. But when they mentioned goats, perhaps a donkeys and some chickens, that doesn't really uh raise my concern level. There are many people have that in their yards and their rural areas.
But yet they're not speculating that. So, so they actually.
No, it doesn't say, well, you could add no large hoofed animals if you'd like to make that a condition.
I, I'm not gonna, gonna do that. Maybe one of my colleagues will because I don't, for me, offering conditions sort of is, is inferred that I support it and I don't. So I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to sort of dress it up um to say no. I always say, oh yes, we're going to do all these things. And I'm going to say, still no. So if somebody else cares to do that, um, that's fair. So I'm not doing that.
I don't chair, I'll say after listening to a lot of the dialogue, um, I can certainly shift to a support. But I would like, in order to do that, I would like to see a condition about, you know, no large animals then. So I'm not sure how that would be crafted, but no large animals, I'm not sure how much you have to put in detail on that. But that would alleviate one of my major concerns. So.
Could, could you maybe specify the size of the animal that you would want to restrict on the property?
Things that you would see at a dairy farm, cows and all the big stuff. It was like, I'm afraid if you start naming things, then you have to.
But you could have giraffes.
Right. Um. Maybe it's just easier to say the animals.
Livestock?
I don't know what definition livestock is, but I, I don't.
Yeah, I'm not sure. If you start naming stuff, you.
Well, we could have staff work that out.
All right. I mean, staff, I suppose staff could work on a condition, but, but before this goes to the board.
Fair enough.
You could just say no large animals and then with staff to work out the details. Scott Clark is our rural planner. So I'm sure he would enjoy that exercise.
I have seen a horse before, so.
You've seen a horse before. I've not touched one, but I have seen one.
All right. Well, it.
All right.
I will say that generally my preference is not to go uh counter to the person whose district that is in. However, I have actually been the commissioner who the whole commission voted against in a project in my district more than once. So these things happen.
That's fine.
Yep. All is fair, commission dealing. So does anyone feel comfortable making a motion? Either way.
I'm happy to make the motion. Um, it's maybe going to be different of due respect to the rest of my colleagues than what you all would prefer. I just personally don't feel like we should put a specific limitation on the type of animal that's on the site. I feel like that's outside of our really charge, really is land use oversight, but I may be wrong. But that aside, I'm gonna um move to recommend approval of S P two zero two one zero 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 one seven Foster Forge Farm School with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Second. I'll second. Were you also including the conditions in the staff report? Yes.
Just the conditions.
All of them. Okay. One through whatever that was.
Yes. All of the, right. One through nine.
One through nine. Okay. Discussion. All right. So um, he did not add large hoofed animals. Is that okay? All right. All right. That's fine. All right. So just, just checking. All right. So and any other discussion on this? If not, we can call the roll. All right. No, no clamoring for further discussion. We'll have the roll, please.
Mr. Claiborne?
No.
Mr. Bivins?
No.
Ms. Firehawk?
Yes.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
All right. The motion passes. It will go forward to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So move on to the, the next item on our agenda, which is the Rye Road Corridor Plan.
Thank you, Chair Firehawk. Um, David Benish, Development Process Manager with Community Development Department and the uh manager of this uh project for the county staff. The board directed staff to undertake a corridor study at Rye Road uh from east of the small area plan area, Ryo twenty-nine small area plan area to the city limits at Melbourne Road. The goal of this project was to develop a community vision and plan that will guide the future design and improvements to the Rye Road Corridor. Very simple goal. Line and grade civil engineering was contracted to undertake the project. Daniel Hire, Principal uh with line and grade, uh will be presenting to you in just a moment. He's upfront, getting ready. Corridor plan, a process began in spring of twenty twenty-one, just about. The consultant has now completed work on what was two phases of the total project. And it's before you today for review and comment. I think the one thing it's important to note is that the, this is a planning level document. And as noted in the goal statement, it establishes a vision for improvements along the corridor with sufficient level of analysis and conceptual design work to understand whether the project concepts and recommendations can address existing and future conditions and can be constructed to meet V dot and other relevant engineering and planning standards. The concepts with this document are not finely designed projects approved and ready for construction. Recommendations from this plan will need to be prioritized for funding and implementation by the Board of Supervisors along with other projects within the county. And once funded, uh, the projects would then be subject to further study, final design, um, work, engineering, final design work. So understand this is truly a planning scale document. Page six of the plan, I hope you read, I kind of provided the uh public input processes that we use and the feedback that we received during the plan development process. That public input effort has been guided by our uh Community and Public Engagement Office or CAPE. And we received front-end comments about the corridor issues and then uh on the concepts um that were proposed. And I would note that um that uh in uh due to the complexities of the issues and uh concepts in the phase one portion of the project, which is from east of twenty-nine to uh the John Warner Parkway. Uh, we did do a update and uh input to the Board of Supervisors on October thirteenth. So we did have an opportunity to get some input from them on that phase one section. So in quick summary here, this is before you for review, comment. And uh those comments that you provide us will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors during their review. What staff is recommending ultimately for this document for, is for the board to accept and endorse the um corridor study and refer it back to staff for consideration and adoption in the upcoming uh review and update of our conference of plan, the A C forty-four process. And with that, we'll turn it over to Daniel.
Thank you, David. Um, good evening, everyone. I'm Daniel Hire with line and great civil engineering. I'm joined by two of my colleagues tonight, Kendra Patrick and Ryan Chaney, who have been instrumental in this effort. And I may have them step to the podium if there's questions that are more technical that maybe I'm not the right person to answer. So um, it's good to be with you tonight. I was here one month ago, um, second on the agenda after Southwood. And it's good to be back. I feel more fresh this evening. So with that, I will uh begin um a presentation which tries to summarize about really eighteen months worth of work in about twenty-five minutes. So that's no small task. So it will not be as comprehensive as the documents you have in front of you. So, and I'll pause briefly for some questions throughout the time today. A presentation outline follows as such. We'll um cover our approach to the work. We'll work through our methodology and how we implemented our approach. We'll report on our findings by phase. And then we'll summarize with our recommendations for implementation. So our approach was really a four-phase um process. The first part of that was to engage the citizens in the corridor itself, to walk it, to experience it for ourselves, to breathe in the exhaust, to feel a little unsafe um and to just watch and learn. We also listened and we also asked questions of the community. And having done that, we tried to um understand and organize what we were hearing, specifically from community stakeholders, citizens and residents. We tried to take that insight and organize it and prioritize what we were hearing based on the project's goals. And having done that, uh, and again, we were operating almost entirely during pandemic. And so a lot of our work had to be, we had to try diligently to keep ourselves forthright with what we were finding and understanding from data, from listening. And so we tried to analyze rank and model all of the inputs we were getting and see if there was trends in the data and what it was telling us. And having done that, we tried to integrate what we found with our intentions. How to make it a safe corridor, how to um improve environmental and public spaces along the corridor, keep traffic moving optimally and effectively, and try to um make access equitable for all who live and use the corridor. And that process was very much iterative. It was not a one-stop shop. It was around the wagon, around the barn numerous times for both phases. So with that as our guiding framework, our methodology was really to assess and analyze more deeply. And in order to do that, it's important to understand how we looked at the corridor, really with two phases, phase one and phase two. The project was originally just phase one when we were um working with staff to scope the corridor study. Phase one being from the John Warner Parkway intersection to the small area plan. And as that project developed, it became a firm understanding that a phase two was warranted and to continue that study all the way to the city line. And it's, it's very logical how it was broken down by phase and you'll see that here. Though the roads share a name, um, Rye Road, that's really all they share between phase one and phase two. Though the roads share a name, Rye Road, that's really all they share between Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is the image on the left and Phase Two is the image on the right. And you can see that there really is not a lot similar about them. And so the phasing really supported our understanding of being able to look at these, looking for how to integrate and keep cohesion on Rye Road, and yet also trying to honor what each portion was trying to be. Within those phases, and again, this is largely based on how those types of roadways were presenting themselves, our areas of focus were specific to the phases. So within Phase One, we found ourselves focusing mostly on nodal points, intersections. Also, the corridor typical section, but really our focus largely oriented around the intersections. Whereas in Phase Two, the corridor itself became more of our focus. Within our assessment, we didn't want our recommendations and our insights to purely be qualitative. It was important that they were also quantitative, especially as citizens were making their voices known. We needed some information that was impartial, that was pure data, and that allowed us to have solid footing on certain recommendations. And so we worked very diligently to understand the corridor's safety from a quantitative standpoint. What kind of accidents were happening? Was it safe? What types of accidents were they and where were they happening? And that, that information informed our recommendations. That said, it was not strictly quantitative. And in our research, we found this nugget of a quote in the bottom right-hand side of that page from the 1965 Highway Research Board that basically says at some point in the past, roadways were not just designed for their quantitative aspects, but quality of the experience was also important. And so we devised our own metrics on how to analyze both of these corridors from a qualitative standpoint. What's it like to walk on the sidewalk? Is it hot? Are there trees? Is there crosswalks? Is there lights? Are there, can you see the bus stops? These types of attributes of the corridor, we took qualitative aspects and quantified them, which might sound a little bit odd, and it is, but it worked for us here on this corridor. And also because this portion of the county is becoming increasingly urban, it was important to understand what is coming down the pipeline in terms of increased traffic. And so specifically at, basically we're front Phase One and Phase Two come together. There's a lot of anticipated increases in traffic. And our understanding of the corridor needed to account for this and corroborate what other developments were presenting as their traffic increases and either confirm or deny that is what our understanding was as well. With that, I'm gonna move right into Phase One, and then I'll pause for questions after that. So within Phase One, I'm gonna work my way basically from the small area plan towards the city line. We're gonna go from north to south or, you know, west to east, depending on how you consider this road's alignment. So at Hillsdale Drive, I'm gonna notate briefly our observations and a few things that are probably interesting for you to know. This is the highest point on the corridor topographically. So there's a really interesting opportunity here as cars are coming out of the small area plan, out of the 29 corridor, that there should be a context shift. And so we think that this is an interesting opportunity to consider such a context shift. Right now, these two intersections are so close together that effectively they operate as one. But they're not doing that well, hence this is the most accident-prone intersection on the corridor. And further astoundingly, as presented here, 89% of the accidents involve a left-hand turn. That's a vehicle turning left is involved in nearly 90% of the accidents recorded in this intersection.
I think so.
Irregardless of direction.
It doesn't matter.
Just turning left.
Don't turn left on that road.
Yeah, don't, don't turn left.
Just don't go left and you're fine.
Right, which. Yeah.
Yeah, Northfield and Hillsdale, Hillsdale.
And you can see if you were traveling south or east and you wanted to make a left onto Old Brook, there's not nearly enough storage space in the turn lanes to even queue. And so this, this problem just builds upon itself really quickly. So yeah, 89% of accidents involve a left-hand turn, and there's eight different left-hand turns to be made at this odd two-way intersection. And so you can see there the statistical information. We aggregated 24 accidents rear-ending, 22 angled, so on and so forth, resulting in over the last six years, somewhere between $1.5 and $2 million worth of damages. So, so how do we conceive to make this better? And we presented in our report three different options. Reduce intersection volume by trying to encourage some number of vehicles to go by a different route or remove some of the left-hand turns. And yet, in doing that, we would have to find off-road connections for those cars to go, encumbering what is currently private property in some way, shape or form. Or we can try to eliminate left-hand turns, which is what we have recommended. And so this is what's called a peanut-shaped roundabout or a bean-shaped roundabout. It basically is a roundabout except shaped as you see. And it does a couple of things. Well, it capitalizes on that opportunity. This is the high point in the corridor and there's a context shift. All of the movements have now been made into yield-controlled movements. And, you know, you can read, you know, read through this or be familiar with it yourself, but it does offer additional resiliency and much safer accommodations for all the vehicles using the corridor. That said, it's effectively a roundabout, and roundabouts are spoken about a lot these days. Some people love them, some people hate them. I can tell you what I think the people on this quarter think about them, and, but I won't. Long story short, most of the stakeholders involved in this discussion, VDOT particularly and county staff, have been very supportive of this concept. And so we've kept it in as our recommendation in the study.
Yes. Thank you for putting page numbers on there. Wouldn't believe the number. You wouldn't believe the number of people just, we don't know what page you're talking about. So on page 12, we have alternative three, and you have the arrow that goes between Northfield and Old Brook. Is that, is that property available?
No, not currently.
Oh, shucks.
No, you need to purchase a parcel.
You would?
You have to buy a house, take it down.
Buy a house?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay, all right, thanks.
Someone listening might want to sell a house. That could be helpful to connect the dots.
But that's, that's an inexpensive option for, for, for an area that loses lives almost once a month.
Yeah, certainly. Wouldn't, didn't disagree with that at all. Yeah, for sure.
Question to that?
Sure.
Peanut approach, does that require acquisition?
The peanut approach, does that require, how much land acquisition does that require?
Really, not as much as you might think. It doesn't take an entire property. So that house you see on the right-hand side of the image.
Yeah.
You can see that house today. It has probably maybe 60 feet setback from the existing corridor. We do encroach toward it substantially. So it is, it is a substantial impact on that parcel, and it wouldn't necessarily be inadvisable to, to acquire that entire property as well.
Right.
It also affects the property on the other side, but for all intents and purposes, it's not much wider than the existing road. So it's relatively compact, given what it's accomplishing.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
They would solve those intersections.
Okay, I'm gonna move along to Belvedere, moving south. Belvedere is different, but has its own challenges. And one of the most prominent challenges of this intersection is the peak hour delays for folks turning left out of Belvedere. And that's only gonna get worse as Belvedere continues to develop. And it may also get worse as the John Warner intersection is overhauled, and we'll talk about that in a moment. But this is close enough to the John Warner intersection that they need to be thought of kind of together instead of apart. There's also lacking infrastructure for, safe infrastructure for pedestrians here. I think the, the document expounds upon that a little more, but the curb ramps point people into traffic as opposed to parallel to traffic. So there is some basic safety improvements also needed. So, but you can see the accidents are actually compared to what we saw on Hillsdale way down. There was one very costly bicycle accident some years ago. So there is a history and recorded history of lack of safety for cyclists along the corridor. And really here, we were considering two different options. One of them had already been conceived prior to us even beginning this study, and that was published in a VDOT study about Belvedere and John Warner. And that's the image you see on the top right-hand side of this image. It's called a restricted crossing U-turn or an R-cut. And R-cuts kind of feel like the best option when you don't really have an option a lot of times, but they're not usually very thoughtful and they're forcing people into a U-turn. It kind of feels like we couldn't think of something. Let's just put an R-cut there. That's kind of how it feels to me. We worked pretty diligently to identify another solution that might fit with the corridor's aesthetic and character a little more specifically and still bring some of the improvements that are wanted. And so we've actually recommended what's called a continuous green T. And if I, if I flashback between these two pages quickly, those white circles representing specific conflict points, we've gone from five to three. That's a 40% reduction. It's not perfect. I haven't removed all of them, but it's substantial because the trick there is how many cars are you gonna cross when you make that left-hand turn? How many different movements are you watching for? And so the continuous green T accomplishes much of what the R-cut does, but it doesn't force every car to go into a U-turn movement. And if cars do want to go into a U-turn, they'll be able to use the roundabout at the John Warner intersection instead of the private street, Greenbrier Terrace, which is very clearly is a small residential street. So we feel like this accomplishes the purposes. It allows us to continue to promote the typical section we'd like to see in the corridor. We can improve traffic safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. What this does show is a changed entrance to City Church as well, that may or may not be what results from their pending site plan that they have and what VDOT might recommend. They do have two entrances currently. They're very close together. And as we'll talk about in a moment, those intersections that are, those entrances that are so close to each other ultimately cause a lot of safety issues.
Can you stay on that for a second?
Yes, sir.
So how are you gonna get the, how are you, I mean, at one point, the church came to us, I guess it's been several years now. Lot of years now. At one point, they were talking about trying to come behind K-Tech to get to the circle. And so where are you, are you taking them in front of K-Tech on this one?
So if we were to really zoom out, you would see that we actually had both of those options schematically laid in. As, as this viewport here shows, we would basically be recommending some sort of interparcel easement to get them to the roundabout so that if they wanted to make a left-hand turn, they would do it through the roundabout as opposed to here. They could also just go out their entrance and make a U-turn in the roundabout. So there's a couple of options there. In all reality, I don't know that they'll lose both of their entrances, but having a commercial entrance in the middle of an intersection is generally ill-advisable. So, and we, we worked with them and they are open and that, you know, they were, they were good people to work with. They were open-minded and understood what was going on, what that plays out to be. I don't know quite yet.
And then the other thing across the streets, you have three, you have three sort of conflict points there. As the center becomes more established and as we continue to age in this community, that's a complicated, I like it, so I should just say that I'm not trying to downplay it. I just, that's like, I think that's a complicated intersection.
Sure.
For people of a certain age.
Sure, you're not, you're not wrong. And I think the current delays are upwards of five minutes, anticipated to go up to eight minutes. Like it's, it's, it is debilitatingly. Complicated and challenging. That said, you just reminded me of something, but I forgot it. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pull it out of the brain at the moment. If it comes back to me, I'll let you know. But I agree with you. Oh, I know it was. When and if that does happen, there's been some concern and some public feedback about putting a traffic signal there. And unlike the R-cut example, the green T can incorporate a traffic signal. And so when and if that is warranted, a traffic signal could be installed within that geometry. So it's kind of a nice variable to have. I know we're not asking necessarily getting to questions yet, but. It's okay. You know, I pull out that intersection about every day because I live there. And, you know, I, I still haven't, I've, I've, first of all, gotta stop and say major thanks to Daniel and team for their work, their patience, engaging the community. They have been tremendous with the CAC and everything, working and listening and considering and incorporating feedback, which there's been a lot of really great feedback and interest from, from the citizens and the, and the committee, CAC, both, you know, not those not on and, and on the CAC. One, I think, concern with this that I'll just say is, and I appreciate being able to put a signal is right now to get out, you time, you're looking right, say, okay, did the light way down at Hillsdale stop? So the traffic, especially if I got to take the left-hand turn across, can I get across safely while also trying to time the light at John Warner, which also has a right-hand turn in the morning for people coming out from the school or wherever else up there flying up Ryo? And so it does feel a little bit like you're taking your life in your hands every time you go pull out that. While, while the, the traffic accidents don't bear it out per se, it is.
Close calls too many times.
It's a very strange thing. What I don't know how to do this is, can, consider the R-cut is like, if you have two, if we take out the two signals there, that now creates some gaps for people to get out there. What is that gonna mean? I mean, at least there's a vehicle.
You mean they'll, they'll be like flowing more regularly and how will you ever get out?
Exactly. The main pattern is going into Charlottesville and north, north of town. And you have, if you take, you know, the proposed traffic circle at the Hillsdale, Old Brook area, and you have the approved traffic circle going in at K-Tech, there's the dominant flow of traffic, especially in the mornings of that, is going, you know, east to west or whatever into Charlottesville, which means there's no light or brake.
Yeah.
To get across.
Is, is, are they talking about getting rid of the, the Greenbrier, the Greenbrier Road light?
No, this, the Greenbrier signal will still be there.
The Greenbrier signal will still be there. I mean, that's not, that doesn't, but there's still a signal.
Yeah.
And actually, there's some good Nepalese food at one of those.
There is, yeah. The Exxon right there.
Get stuck there long enough, you can go eat dinner.
There really is good food there.
It is good. It's the one that used to be, it used to be a subway now, it's, yeah.
Yeah. But so, I mean, but that, but that gets to your point is that how do you manage that, particularly if you're coming east? You're coming west, it's really easy. I mean, you're coming east, having, even with this.
Yeah, right. And then we're gonna have. To be bared out. And to point, this is a very, very complicated road. I, I think it's worth noting that the traffic signal may be an important consideration once we see how the John Warner roundabout operates. I do think the roundabout will integrate, provide more gaps, just because the cars are like, you know, it's hard to predict how those gaps will play out depending on the how, who's occupying the roundabout at any given moment. It's certainly possible. Yeah. I, I only speak, my wife's from northern Indiana and South Bend, and they love roundabouts. And she has multiple of them in front of her parents' house. And in the morning, the dominant traffic, they just don't leave enough space.
It seems like.
They just keep enough space. They don't leave enough space to let anybody in.
But it seems like these things work best when there's, when they're all roundabouts.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? In other words, like if this, this intersection was also around, like everyone would have to keep pausing and letting people in. And but this, but with this not being a roundabout, and then the other one, it, I don't know, I share your concern. That it could be tricky.
Yeah, you could put a roundabout here.
Okay, good.
Just way more expensive.
We're never gonna get any money to do this. We'll never get the money to do it. We need to move forward, remember, forward, forward.
But no, I appreciate not just putting in our code. I didn't mean to say, in general, movements is complicated here. It is complicated. It will continue to be complicated, but it can be improved for sure. We can.
What's the second word that comes from Belvedere? It takes you, if you go by the, by the, by the swim team or whatever that thing is.
Yeah, you go over the old railroad bridge. Yeah, and then it goes over to Huntington and then comes out of Huntington.
Yeah, you go over the old railroad bridge. Yeah. And then it goes over to Huntington and then comes out of Huntington.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We, we considered interparcial kind of like off-grid connections. In this case, we didn't recommend any, there's a little bit of backstory there, but they're not recommended at this time. I'm going to
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to go follow to John Warner and then the typical section they'll pause and we can really dig into some of this because John Warner is going to lead to more questions too, I'm sure. Okay. John Warner Roundabout is slated to become, sorry, the John Warner Intersection is slated to become a roundabout. That project is funded. What we are thinking about when we think about this intersection in particular is that we anticipate the pedestrian activity is going to substantially increase here. And that's an important consideration for whatever improvements are made. The intersection does operate at a poor level of service during the peak hours. We know that it will get worse without the improvement project, but it's happening. So that's good. Interestingly, half of the accidents that happen here are rear ends. I think there's a a firm reason for that. So half of the accidents at this intersection are rear end accidents. 20% of them involve emerging maneuver.
Is it, is it rear ending where someone stops for the traffic light?
What, what, we don't know exactly the cause. My, my suspicion. Well, before I go into that suspicion, compared to Hillsdale, 10% of the accidents here are left-hand turns. So you can see that this, really this is what you see happening and you can see it in this picture just above the red car above the sign in the middle.
I've seen people run that light.
You have two.
Yeah. I have seen, sat there and seen people just go right through the red.
You have two lanes traveling down Rio the whole way. And then you get to this intersection and all of a sudden one of them becomes a left-hand turn lane. And you have to either merge quickly or rear-end somebody. And so here we got the, the two prominent types of accidents are rear endings and merging conflicts. So we, we think that's really a result of the two lanes becoming one at a turn lane. The roundabout should alleviate some of that. It's a dual lane roundabout. So the conceptual solutions at this intersection for one is what's proposed, which is basically dropping a roundabout on top of the existing intersection. That's what VDOT is intending to do. As a result of our look at this, we ended up proposing a different location for that roundabout. That would be number two. And we proposed it in, in a location that was a little more at the crossroads at the macro level. And also remove some of the, what we were calling redundant infrastructure. I still believe it is that, but there should, there could also be a purpose to that extra infrastructure. And then we presented these two options to the board and were advised to explore a third hybrid option, which was also explored. So those design solutions at the same time. So the left image is the VDOT concept. And the right image was our original interpretation of how to simplify and center that roundabout. It did move the intersection closer to Dunlora. And yeah, that's why it's, that's why it's still an alternative and not a recommendation.
If you preserve the wildflowers, you might get away with that.
Are there, are there wildflowers there?
Oh, yeah. There's a plaque also.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
A what?
There's a plaque.
There's a plaque. Oh, they're on the plaque.
Oh, we should go out there and walk around. Yeah, we should go check it out.
Have a good field trip.
Get some food after.
Just keep going.
In all seriousness though, in all seriousness, both are going to be a substantial improvement, certainly. And we were advised, I believe relatively clearly that it's really the VDOT roundabout that's preferred. So, but by the citizens and well, it, it's still preferred. In short summary though, to point out what's happening with the VDOT one, just for your understanding. That, so the, the traffic lane will be, the traffic signal will be replaced with a roundabout. You can see it's a dual lane roundabout. Then the northbound Rio, so coming from Rio face two onto the corridor will be what's called a non-yielding right-hand turn lane. You can see that. I wonder if I get my cursor on there somehow. Yeah. This is a non-yielding right-hand turn lane.
Oh, just going that way.
It, it just by, kind of bypasses the roundabout.
But what are you there now? That's there now.
No, not really. No.
There's a funny little, there's that funny little jog road, which.
Oh yeah, that, that's, that's Dunlora Drive. That's still there. That's this road here. You can see the K-Tech entrance is modified, but I think in a good way. And then partial access median restriction for a left-hand turn movements. What that means is the left-hand turn off Dunlora actually can't make the left-hand turn anymore. So they're, they have to go into the roundabout. So if you want to live in Dunlora and want to go south on Rio, you, you go through the roundabout. Again, that's not uncommon. Some of to, to use the roundabout as a slingshot to get going in the direction you want. That said, though, the, the flower meadow is being proposed to turn into a stormwater basin on the VDOT option. And the additional northbound turn lane will actually continue almost all the way to Belvedere, further complicating what we want to do at Belvedere as well. So those, those are things that I think may not necessarily be explicit at a first glance. That's why we brought those to the attention. We, we truly felt like it could be improved for, for all movements. And that's how we ended up with the option on the right. Which in essence, and this truly, I, I don't know that this was a good thing, but this is what we conceived is that Rio Road will actually follow the original Rio Road alignment. And then come into the intersection up near Dunlora. Basically moving that will, you know, going back to this one. This is where the VDOT one is, and we proposed up here. And you can see in, with those magenta lines in this second image, how we've basically simplified the intersection, the, the movements, right? We looked at this a lot. It became, to be entirely frank with you, it became relatively excitable for people to talk about these two options. And I respect the position that it was moving it closer to their homes. Nobody would want that, myself included. So I fully respect their position as citizens to express their thoughts there. But the two, those were really kind of the competing interests here because we're trying to handle the peak hour traffic, right? The left-hand turns actually weren't really the problem. It was the peak hour. And so in summary, for, for this moment, we'll, we'll come back to discuss if you want, but the, the VDOT option is the preferred solution for this intersection based on us listening and, and all of the stakeholders. That's what we believe is the appropriate recommendation at this time, just given all that we've heard and listened to. And then finally, and this is my last slide before we can pause and questions. The corridor itself actually has a large number of accidents along it, not specifically at an intersection. And it's really easy to target what that's about. And that's the access management standards along the corridor are almost entirely lacking for most of it. And what, what I mean by access management is what VDOT would recommend in terms of spacing of entrances and how those entrances are designed. Those gas stations where you can get the Nepalese food is a great example of just numerous commercial entrances stacked directly adjacent to each other. Where pedestrians are supposed to exist is virtually on, it's ambiguous. You can't tell where there's, it's unsafe. And so we believe the recommendation for this area really is to, as these parcels along the corridor redeveloped, to really strictly enforce access management standards as designed by VDOT. And I think that will help substantially alleviate a lot of these access management accidents, rear endings and angle. And, and also we're recommending the, what the dual, the continuous dual left-hand turn lane or where I grew up called a suicide lane be replaced with a raised median where we've identified it could be installed and the study includes those locations, but there's a lot of real estate to be gained back along the corridor that could be a raised median instead of just a, a turn.
Now I've, I've heard VDOT call it suicide lanes here.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's, that's how I was raised. There's a reason for that word.
Yeah.
And the accidents along the corridor kind of justify it or support it. Okay. I'm going to, I want to go to phase two. I also want to be mindful of time. I feel like I've been talking a lot. Do you want to stop for questions or do you want me to keep going?
Well, I, I will just sort of, sort of add that, you know, at some point we need to go on record that the county is going to have to have a public works department. Because when you put raised, when you put raised medians in it, that means I'm assuming we're going to put something alive in them, right? And VDOT is not going to take care of it. You have my favorite zombie intersection further up where they spent all of that money for the bridge going over 29. They put those lovely pots there that for one season had lovely plants in it. And then they abandoned them. And now they just have sort of zombie weeds coming out. So if you grow across it, the weed will grab you and put you in there like Little House of Horrors. Little Shop of Horrors. And so you just, you know, if we're going to do these kinds of things, we have to move towards somebody who's going to take care of it. Otherwise, let me have suicide lines. At least they'll, you know, at least I can draw chalk around the car when it gets hit.
There's been a number of citizens who agree with you and they voiced that and that's documented in the study. I agree with you too.
Yeah.
Just for context, so the orient, my thought commissioners that may not be familiar, if you can go back a slide around the, the roundabout area, the proposed on that green area and that kind of on the south side with the complicated.
Which one of VDOT or the
The VDOT preferred solution is that is also leads into what is the the trail, the, the pedestrian trail that runs beside it. It's increasingly more used and it's going to be likely used even more with all the additional housing coming in there. So that, that's, that was one of the major, not the only, but one of the major consideration concerns in addition as like how, how do pedestrians move across this? This is the solutions that there. I withhold any opinion at this point, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that that is a, when we think about multimodal traffic, that is a significant multimodal access point for people to move bike to work, all that to get into town.
Neon green.
That's the neon green. Yeah.
And that would be the brown one on the other, on the other one, the golden rod one. Is that the gold with that? Is that a simple, does that play?
Yeah, that's a shared use path coming through. Yeah.
The shared use path that would connect into the existing.
Cross a lot of streets around that.
I would, I just a probably naive question, the right turn bypass. Why is that necessary? Is it simply traffic volumes to try to reduce them on the actual roundabout?
That's a, one of the highest movements in the corridor. And so they're giving preferential treatment to, to keeping that, that traffic moving. And that, that's kind of where the problem is now, right? All the cars turning right are one of the problem areas.
It just feels like that intersection with Dunlora, when you come out of there and you're turning right, I would be confused. Like where do I go?
Interestingly enough, as we combed through the VDOT study and tried to really understand where their position was, they kind of left that open-ended. They basically said, oh, and by the way, we acknowledge that Dunlora Drive doesn't meet access management standards. That should be considered during design phase.
Which, which one?
So this, the location of this road in relationship to this intersection doesn't comply with any sort of access management criteria. And this was, this was kind of a result in my understanding of just putting the intersection on top of the other and saying, oh, we have a problem. Solve it with a roundabout. The roundabout does solve the problems, but one of the ancillary things it created as a problem was this situation, which the report, if you read it, does say is currently they don't have a solution for how to solve that. So that, that is the solution is just to leave it.
Create chaos.
Potentially.
Got it. Second thing I just wanted to say, I've been dying to say this is I've seen millions of slides in my life. You guys put together the best slides. They're so cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, really. So much information for sure, but really understandable.
Thank you for saying that. I didn't say this, but I will, uh, because I just read my own slide and realized I think these are important points, especially in terms of the county's larger objectives. The option on the right, even though it's not preferred, what, what it effectively did was it took that wildflower garden and it made it accessible public space by joining it to the proffer from the Rio Point Development. And so you ended up with a much broader public space. And we thought, we felt like that was a warranted way to integrate the two projects. I'll actually show you that better when I get to phase two. The other thing it did is it actually reduced impervious areas and reduced conflict points. And we feel like those were also both, we kind of tried to think of it outside the box and that's what we came up with. Okay. Moving on to, should I just keep going? You want to go? Okay. I'm going to keep going. Phase two. Okay. We're no longer going to focus on specific intersections. We're going to focus on like chunks of the corridor that have some commonality. And so the first one was from John Warner Parkway where we were just talking about to Penn Park. And this is a really interesting portion of the corridor as the image on the left shows specifically because it it's kind of the last little bit of the corridor that represents what it once was, a rural road.
I remember it.
Yeah. And so this is kind of the last look at it. Before long, this is not going to look like this. And so, but we do feel like this does present the county with a unique opportunity to let these developments help promote what the study recommends in terms of how to incorporate all this development and to do it in, in a thoughtful and creative way. So we'll talk about that more in a minute, what that looks like. Interestingly enough, here this, you'll find this interesting and we, we found it interesting in this portion of the roadway. Most of the accidents are with something off the road, a fixed object, a tree. Which I think will get better now that the county has installed their sidewalk project on this portion of the road. But it is, and I think that will go away as the development happens. But that was really interesting. And I think that's what you see a lot as, as development density increases, but the roadway really doesn't. And it still has trees and poles and all these things next to the road. So that was an interesting observation. So, so what does that look like? Again, we, we've kept with the recommendation of, of integrating a median into this portion of the corridor. And you, you can see in the map on the bottom, what that might look like to have a raised median or painted. It could be either. What that might look like adjacent to both the Rio Point Development and the Rio Commons Development, which if, if taken together, effectively give you the opportunity to work toward this plan of implementation for almost 80% of this portion of the road. It could be done for you as you, as these developments come online and gets the shared use path for all these residents to to John Warner Greenway Trail, which is huge. That this is going to be a much improved condition as development happens. And we, we think it should look like this ultimately. Again, trees and landscaping require maintenance, but it also creates character and makes roads more enjoyable to walk along and in some ways promotes safety of vehicles driving a little more slowly.
Are the Rio Point and Rio Commons Development massing? Is that based on a real plan?
Yeah, this is from them. Yep. So we, we took their documents and laid them in. I don't take credit for any of it, but we just dropped it on.
Yeah. We haven't seen Rio future. We haven't seen Rio Commons, have we?
Thank you. I think, well, it's a by right development.
Oh, of course we haven't seen.
It was a site plan. I don't believe you've seen it. You haven't actually seen it. It was approved administratively.
Yeah, no, we, I just told Julie, we didn't do that one.
We did the other one. Yeah.
Yeah.
But didn't look like that when it came out.
No.
So what, what we are proposing is that these developments provide the shared use path on their frontage as recommended here, which will leave about, I think 180, maybe 200 feet of shared use path remaining to get it to Penn Park, which would be an amazing connection for the county to try to see through. Because what you basically then is have unlocked a shared use path to Penn Park Road, which again has no sidewalks or anything along it, but we are getting that much closer to another major park coming online to an off-road connection, which really promotes people using these multimodal, excuse me, multimodal options. As we transition to the central portion of this part of the corridor on the next slide, I want to draw your attention that what we are recommending is the shared use path will cross Rio here. And the shared use path will end up on the other side of the road for, for reasons that, for which I'll explain. Okay. The central portion of phase two, Penn Park Road to Stonehenge is, is noteworthy in its own right. Really what we have the opportunity to do, if money was no object, is to really begin to unite the central and the northern portions with a common aesthetic, which is entirely lacking right now. It's sort of ad hoc at best. So we, we think there's an opportunity to bring unity to the corridor at large. Also interestingly, is there, there's a lot of safety concerns in this portion of the roadway. For one, the Walter Schools turn lanes, the left-hand turn line from, turn line from northbound Rio is deficient. And 50% of the accidents there are rear end accidents. Town Lane, the left-hand turn for Town Lane is entirely lacking. And there's also a bunch of accidents there. I'll show you in a moment. And there's actually sufficient width to provide a turn lane. So we should provide one. Intersection site triangles are obstructed at Penfield. Um, intersection site triangles are obstructed at Penfield Lane. That's actually, um. Uh, that's right here. And you'll, well, in the, in the document, you can see why that was those, those site triangles are obstructed. Uh, and the vertical curvature of the roadway, again, stemming from the original rural road. The vertical curvature of the roadway at Penfield Lane, um, doesn't provide sufficient sight distance at that intersection. Which is in my mind, uh, an opportunity to repost the speed lower. And I think that case could be made to beat that. If you, I don't know if you got the appendix. Um, Ryan did an evaluation on that vertical curve and it's in the appendix under our engineering evaluation. Um, I think that stands to promote, um, having a discussion about a reposted speed limit. Okay, so here, here's a quick, this is, this was worth showing you. This was coming out of the, um, statistical software that Ryan was working with. This is Town Lane here, uh, where my cursor is. And you can see one, two, three, four, five, six rear end accidents at Town Lane. No left-hand turn lane. There is sufficient width for it. We need to get one in. This is also interesting. Um, there's a partial access entrance here, entrance here, right in, right out. That people don't actually honor. They're kind of like, even though it's trying to push them, they basically use it as a slingshot and go the other way. I actually saw this at the new Wawa on two fifty the other day, too. It's almost like what it needs is it needs a median to actually reinforce that movement. Which of course we're recommending. So I thought that was we're showing you. This is also we're showing you, this is in this portion of the corridor. Um, if you don't account for the DUI or the young driver, um, speeding on the road. All of the accidents at Stonehenge are rear end accidents. Again, a left-hand turn is lacking. Um, we have a recommendation for that. I'll show you in a moment. So. The typical section here looks largely the same as the northern portion. Uh, again, we think that's an opportunity to really blend all the way from John Warner to Stonehenge with a, a really consistent looking roadway. And, um, you can see, uh, Town Lane has been given a left-hand turn lane. What, what you have currently is you have a bunch of lane widths that are inconsistent. You've got some that are fourteen feet, some that are ten feet. You've got a bus stop where you don't need one. There's a bunch of infrastructure that can be reallocated to a consistent use. And that's what you see here in a proposed plan. Um, in addition to that, and I think you, you might have an opportunity in the future when Eco Village redevelops. Uh, to break off Rockwood from Stonehenge and actually separate them because that's a really bad condition currently. Where there's kind of two entrances jumbled up together. I think the report showed a picture of that specifically. Okay, and I'm going to try to wrap it up here. Um, Stonehenge to the city, this is where the roadway looks like you just chain went to a different planet. It's just so different. You, you go south of Stonehenge and you have this winding road with steep topography and a lot of vegetation, guardrails everywhere. The shoulder is ambiguous. Is it a shoulder? Is it a ditch? I don't know. Cars are using it like that red truck to get around the car. Um, sight distances are challenged. Yeah, the car is waiting to turn. It has, the cars have to pull so far forward to see. And so.
This truck is, is that your truck, Daniel?
That was the right answer to that question. Um. Sight distance on these curves are challenged. It does not proficient stopping sight distance. So. Um, and interestingly, in this portion of the roadway, nearly half of all accidents are single vehicle. So it's a car that just. Loses control because they weren't doing something properly. So really what we ended up recommending in the report, we kind of broke away from our pattern of recommendations and really just gave the county. And presumably potentially the city as a partner, because, um, Agne, Agne Street, which is in that weird intersection is the city, that's the city boundary. We basically just made a few recommendations of a safety improvement plan, like bringing the guardrail up to standard and maybe revising, um, the intersection geometry to be a little safer. Um, to actually allow the critical slopes on Eco Village to be impacted because in doing that. Those turns you can't see because of the critical slope. And if you gave the developer at Eco Villas the chance to diminish those critical slopes, as bad as that sounds. You basically give the sight distance that's, that's needed along those curves. Um, so anyway, that was some, some thoughts there. Also promoting some pedestrian connectivity and finding ways to get people over to the John Warner Parkway Trail as shown in that image on right. Really trying to promote any kind of pedestrian connectivity on this stretch of Rio Road. Um, is almost an entire study in itself. It's, it's very complicated there. The creek is eroding, the, it's coming close to eroding the road bed. It's just an entirely different conversation and not we're trying to build a sidewalk there right now. There's, there's other low hanging fruit for us to pursue. Okay, briefly implementation. There's more of this in the report if you wanted to go through it, but as currently conceived, and I'm still wrestling with myself about this personally. Um, John Warner's first because that money's there, it's coming, let's get it done.
Right.
I struggle to recommend improving Belvedere over Hillsdale in, in our order of recommendations. I kind of feel like Hillsdale should actually be first because it's, it's the least safe and worst performing intersection. Um, with a lot of opportunity to make safety a lot better. But at least currently can, as currently conceived, John Warner is our first recommendation, Belvedere our second, for reasons we already discussed, they're kind of basically unified, they're joined at the hip. Hillsdale after that, and then infill improvements over time as parcels redevelop. If, if you may not have noticed, but our recommendation on the proposed typical section is to extend the. Shared use path all the way along this portion of the road up to the small area plan, basically creating the North Town Trail connection that is lacking. And that's accomplished by taking the bike lanes off the road and putting them on the shared use path. Um. Phase two, uh, I think the low hanging fruit is to work with the developers in the near term to get that shared use path built on the northern section. Um, implement safety improvements in the southern portion along Agnes as, as soon as we can find money for that. Uh, and then I think the inner, the infill intersection improvements at Town Lane, Penfield Lane, where there's, there's. Easy restriping efforts to get turn lanes or maybe reposting the speed to, to get the vertical curvature under control. Uh, and then just continued infill improvements like we're seeing with the, the county sidewalk projects that just happened there. So I'm done now. Uh, we can ask questions, we can not ask questions. If it's more technical, I might have Ryan come up, uh, and join me. So I'm done.
All right. So you're here to get input from the commission? I have only one point to make, so go ahead. I've been always letting them go.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, yeah, it's your thing. You work left or right? Okay, all right, I'll go.
They've been getting to go first all night.
Um, first, that was a great presentation. And, um, as an architect, I'll say those were some great slides. So well done. Uh, one question I have is this more for my knowledge and what threshold or metric do you use? Or do you have to hit before you say, you know what, a left turn just isn't the right call out of this intersection? So like. The Belvedere one, for example, it looked pretty messy, um, coming out of Belvedere and then the comment about the age of the residents there. When do you say no left turn? Just kind of curious to get your opinion on that.
Well, I, Ryan, you might want to come up now, but, um, I would say, um, interestingly enough. And I think it's because of the way it operates currently that there's not a lot of accidents there currently. The accident data at that intersection was very low, and I think it's because it feels so unsafe that drivers then have that much more focus.
Uh, yeah, I can't speak. I mean, the, 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 the other thing to note right now is a lot of. People I know avoid it because they either go through Dunlora and come out and then come to the light.
Because it's so hard.
Because it's so hard, or they go through Huntington if they're going north or something and get away from that intersection. So there is a lot of movement from. The Belvedere neighborhood, how that progresses. You know, we have Saka back there now, and as it builds out, I don't know how that's going to progress, but right now there is a lot of. Ways to find, you know, like movement to find alternative ways not to go to that intersection. But how that would change if it's more functional and people felt like they could get through it, it might. Yeah, you know, if your first time coming and Google's taking you, it's going to take you that way to get to the senior center or the center, excuse me, not senior center, the center at the Belvedere.
Um, I'll just say as to kind of address your question. When, whenever you eliminate a movement and you say, okay, no left turn, you have to think about. Okay, there, there's some group of people that still have to go in a certain direction. So how, what is the impact of that? And with an R cut, what you're doing, you're saying no left turn, but really you're not. What you're doing is you're taking that left turn movement, you're saying. Okay, we're going to change that left turn into a U-turn. And we're going to move it away from the intersection. And so a, an R cut can be really effective if you have a much safer area further down the road where you can make that U-turn. In this case, our opinion is that doesn't really exist on this corridor. And so.
Three gas stations is where it would be in front of.
So our evaluation was it would actually be, let's just leave the left turn, but like, what are the safety improvements we can implement? Right there. And one of the things that the, um, that the continuous green tea does is, uh, so Dan mentioned it re, it reduces those conflict points. Uh, instead of having all of those lanes right on top of each other that you have to cross, it spreads out the conflict points. So. Psychologically, you actually, you actually do have still five conflict points, but they're not crossing conflict points. So a crossing is when you're, when you're crossing of a lane of traffic, right? That's inherently different and, and different safety wise than emerging movement, right? So it's much easier generally to merge into traffic than it is to cross over a lane of traffic. It's much safer. And so what that does is it, it takes two of those crossing, uh, conflict points and it changes them into merging conflict points. So basically what we're saying is you make the left turn, uh, kind of halfway, right? So you get into this, your own lane and then you accelerate and then further down the road, you've got to manage a merge, right? But we think that that's much safer than doing all of those movements within the intersection. That kind of makes, makes sense.
It does. I think in that right, I have to go back to the slide, but for that recommend, that set of recommendations for that intersection, I think it said that you could put a traffic light there in the future. Um.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you repurpose a traffic light? So the ones you're taking down for the V dot roundabout, can you repurpose traffic lights to move them to another intersection? Does it work like that?
Uh, I don't know the, if you would want to do that for that particular light, it depends. So there's, um. There are different advancements. The newer lights are actually much more energy efficient and you can, traffic lights actually take a lot of energy to run. Um, and so that's one of the things that we have to think about when we're talking about. You know, future projections and stuff, one of the things you don't have to worry about with the roundabout, there's no. It still works when the power goes out. You don't have a power bill. You don't have all the infrastructure there. So, um, that's another thing that we consider with these improvements. Uh, one thing to note about this specific intersection with the traffic light is if you do, if, if it is warranted, you do put a signal here. It will be more efficient than a traditional four-legged signal. Because you'll notice the southbound traffic here is not included in that signal. So they, that's why it's called a continuous green tea. So they just can go straight. They don't have to, they don't have to stop. And what that does is it reduces that cycle time.
Okay.
From four to three. So you get a twenty-five percent bonus. It's twenty-five percent faster than a normal signal would be.
Got you. And then the last thing I have is just a comment, and I tend to agree with the phasing of the implementation where. I think this gentleman had mentioned numbers two and three, you would rotate. So the peanut first. Um, I tend to agree with that, at least provides some safety from Belvedere. If you really felt it was unsafe, you could go down and. Use the peanut and swing back up. I'm not sure. The folks would do that, but it seems like a reasonable approach to that.
Yeah, from, from here, the peanuts quite a ways. Um, so I think I don't think people would do that, but.
You, instead of going on the peanut, you would go to the traffic circle. The traffic circle is closer to this.
Okay.
The, the peanut is up by the mall.
But you still like.
Yeah, I thought a peanut was a clever solution. I thought it was, so.
Sounds like a crack tracks.
All right, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
I've, I've had plenty of time with this.
I just, I just have a, a question for, for Mr. McDermott. So what's that north, what's that north point? Is it this? Is this, is this, is this, what's that north, north point, north point?
I'm sorry, uh.
You're asking what the solution?
Oh, the new ones, the new ones on twenty-nine at North Point. No, those are, those are R cuts, not green tea.
That's not green tea. And the one that everybody gave you a bunch of, a bunch of pushback over there on Fries Mill, what was that?
On Fries, Fries Mill, that was going to be an R cut as well. And, um. There was, as, as Daniel pointed out, there was an R cup proposed at this location and it was not well received by the public. Uh, and we were going to make a smart scale application for that R, R cut in the last round and we decided to pull that. Okay. We focused on the roundabout at John Warner Parkway instead, and because we wanted to do a little more evaluation, which was what was provided from this study.
I just have, I just have one comment. Um, so I, I've seen your work before in, in over in Haven Street and all that. It's excellent. So. Um, you know, I, I'm not here to, uh, re redesign your intersections. I think that you've done a great job. I did like your roundabout solution better than the V dot one that you. Said you were going to go with because of public comment. But nevertheless, my comment is completely different from everyone else's. Um. I actually just want to push the envelope a little bit and suggest that when you, this could be considered that instead of raised tree lawns. That you consider using this opportunity to put in bio swales. I went, I, I. Cause V dot, of course, only has to treat stormwater from lanes that are new. So if there's an existing road that didn't have stormwater treatment, it's still going untreated into our local creeks. And you want to know what's wrong with? The creek, well, look at the road network and all the incredible amount of impervious surface there. So up by, uh, Rio where we did the, the form-based code. Earlier, that was something I worked with staff on was to change the illustrations to be recessed by swells. I think that. Yes, that would require some regrading of the road because the road is currently crowned and you'd have to do a little bit of, you know. Uh, so I know that my, my request is not inexpensive, but I think that. Um, if we're going to bother to, to do that, it's not that much more to necessarily recess and treat stormwater. So. I would like to suggest complete green streets, which includes, um, you know, low impact development, best management practices integrated into there, not just tree lawns.
I agree with you. And if you don't mind, I'd like to riff on that for just a second.
Sure.
Um, it's our experience that it's better to not place them in the median, but to you place them in negative spaces along the margins, especially where you're.
Do that, too.
Where you're introducing a turn lane or not, a lot of times. Roundabouts are a great example of this. You, you have negative space on the margins that could be repurposed. We find that's actually a more effective way to do exactly what you're doing instead of re-crowning the road.
Yeah, it is definitely more, uh, less expensive when you've already got a, already crowned road and, uh, then I don't know if the roundabouts also, I have seen by, uh, bio filtration in roundabouts. So.
Yeah, um.
Because there's going to be a lot of grading going on to put it around about in the first place. And a lot of times in some.
Yeah.
Lazy places, they are just boring lawns. They've done nothing with that, that space. And it's an opportunity besides having just more turf grass, which is the number one crop in the Chesapeake Bay drainage. A little factoid.
And if you do those bio filters right, they end up being probably less maintenance than.
Yes. Yeah. Cause you don't, you not going out and having to mow it every week.
Yep.
Yeah, a lot of them can be planted with native plants to keep going.
Yeah, there, there's, there's certainly a good opportunity. A, a good example of that might be like in this, in this picture, this area here. Where the shared use path could bend slightly and you create a little pocket. And so that's how we've done in the past. We've done a number of roundabout designs and we've always ended up doing the infiltration at the margins.
Yeah.
Um, in these pockets of negative space. And this corridor is full of them. You can.
And then they can look like gardens. So people just think, oh, thank you for this path along this beautiful garden.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, maybe when you get ready to take this again, back to the board of supervisors, that right is going back. Yeah, I mean, maybe as part, I, I did read your whole report, read it twice.
Okay, thank you.
Cause it was, the first time I was like, wow, it's a lot. So I read it again. But I, I think you really want to hit the board with, uh, the fact that improving this road. Will also help stabilize property values.
Hmm.
Because the more the road degrades, the more it becomes, feels like kind of a highway and a no man's land, which is what it's starting to feel like. And you, you talked about that in your report. I mean, basically some sections that were just frankly quite ugly.
Yeah.
Um, so by stabilizing it, by beautifying it, by making it an inviting place. That will also stabilize the property values on those neighborhoods because we do see that with the inner urban ring. That some of those earlier neighborhoods are starting to decline and people are wanting to go farther out. So it, it helps with our policy of reinvesting in the urban ring. Um, Julian was just whispering in my ear, how much is this all going to cost? Julian was just whispering in my ear, how much is this all going to cost? You know, and I know we can only go so far with smart scale grants, so that's, I guess that's also a concern. I mean, it's sort of like, wish you had been here and we had hired you thirty years ago. Who did that be about?
He was still, he was still working at the Forge Farm.
When I first moved to this area, my friends who knew I was kind of an eco person said, you should live right on Rio Road because it's like the countryside. And I'm really glad I didn't listen to them. It was. It was, but I, you know, it's, it's lost a lot of its charm.
So how much is this going to cost?
Before I answer that, I think, one thing that's kind of lost in in how we had to present this tonight, and I went way over my twenty-five minutes. But Charles' initial charge to us was to try to create character where there is none.
Right.
And I think if you do step back and look at the recommendations as a whole, the character will come. And those things you mentioned, I think are largely character. Now, the road has virtually no character to me.
No, it's just a highway. It feels like a highway slicing through, and it's designed for speed. That's why there's crashes. It's not just signals.
I do think we'll see improvement, though, as the parcels redevelop, as these projects come online. I do think it'll be incremental, but I do think we'll see it.
Yeah, it's good to have a vision and be able to articulate what we want. And certainly, as you know, as a traffic planner, vegetation creates visual stimuli that slows down drivers. Because the more stimuli in your field of vision, the slower people drive. And there's multiple studies on that. So I'd like to create some visual stimuli of the vegetative nature as much, as much as we can. And and I totally understand about maintenance, but we've got so much untreated stormwater, because most, a lot of that area was already developed before stormwater regulations. So thank you for your excellent work. Is there anything else that?
A lot.
Which, well, it's broken down into chunks. Obviously, the John Warner roundabout is being built, what, six point six or something like that? Eight, okay, yeah, eight. So to give you, to give you kind of a metric of what you might think.
Just the roundabout.
So the John Warner roundabout that will be built will be built with eight million dollars. That's usually, that's a good benchmark on which to compare things. Hillsdale would probably be about that, actually maybe less, given how, actually not a lot of infrastructure. I think we have a cost estimate on that.
That's not two times the double roundabout?
It certainly needs further study, but I don't think it might be as much as you might think. Yeah, so it it's chunks. But you have to start pointing those chunks toward a direction over time.
About twenty-five million.
To do all of this? Yeah, probably, maybe a little more.
Five here, fifty there. Soon we're talking about a bond, a bond, a bond referendum.
Maybe, yeah. I mean, I'm particularly excited about the northern portion of Phase Two, where I feel like those two developments coming in quick succession can really help move the needle for that portion. So it's just being of, staff being aware to help, you know, implement this as redevelopment happens.
Yeah, well, and again, when you talk to the board, you emphasize they want to see all this infill. We have to create safe corridors and deal and plan for our traffic. And some of that's going to be on us, and that's all part of protecting the rural area. If we want people to want to keep living in this very dense environment, we have to make it nice. Not only just safe, just beautiful.
Then this corridor does filter into the raw form-based code area that we're supposed to be the new downtown.
Trying to attract people.
Has no character.
Yeah.
Where we're trying to build character is is a challenge.
Yeah, and we're doing it in a sort of backwards manner, because we should have done it a long time ago, but here we are. So any other comments? Thank you. I think it's really great that we deferred this item to tonight, instead of listening to it at midnight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your work.
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify with Mr. Benish, are you looking for a motion or action from the commission tonight?
I don't think an action is needed. It certainly would be helpful, but I think the minutes from this meeting will be forwarded to the board with your comments.
Things that we'd like to see.
Yeah, so I think that's been documented in the minutes.
I did forget David gave me a slide that I think I was supposed to put up that had something on it for you all.
Yeah, that that was just to let you know what what we're moving forward with, but you don't have to make a motion. I think that, I think you've summarized it in the minutes.
Take excellent. Okay, so moving on, do we have any committee reports from the commission?
Oh, I just want to say that I was at a meeting. We heard from this young man, I shouldn't say that. We heard from this individual when he first got here. This is Gabe Daly, the Climate Protection Program Manager. I would suggest that at some point, Chair, that you're asked to have him do his presentation. He's been to a bunch of CACs, but not all of us live in CACs.
I heard him yesterday, actually.
Yes, you heard him. And I just thought it was, it was interesting to see where he was, where he was going. Plus, it would be helpful with some of the, the communications we've had about how we're not paying attention to something.
Okay, I'll work on that. All right, any other, any committee, anything, CACs, anything? Nope. My historic preservation meeting was canceled due to lack of worms, so nothing. All right, then, any, we have the Board of Supervisors next. Madam Perkins?
Thank you. Candace Perkins, Planning Director. Be very brief. The board did meet on May eighteenth. There were no public hearings for planning development applications.
Thank you for that excellent and short report.
I have a few questions.
The chair does not recognize Commissioner Mistle at this time. Moving on, any old business or new business?
We'll get a new schedule, won't we?
You, are you asking for a new schedule?
Yes, I don't have a June one. I don't have a June schedule.
Well, we have the master schedule for the year.
No, it's been changed.
We got the master schedule with the new dates. Yes, I dutifully put them in my calendar.
I didn't see that.
We'll make sure that you got another copy, sir.
Thank you so very.
We have this thing called email, and we will send it along.
I have a little dog that comes down the river.
We'll send a carrot pigeon to your house.
I do. Madam Chair, I just want to note that I will not be at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
I'll be absent.
So, so understood. All right, so with that, there's nothing else. I hereby adjourn this meeting of the Planning Commission to June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.